Six o'clock. All right. We'll call the meeting to order. Can you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Wilcoxen.
Present.
Mayor Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Sweet.
Present.
Councilmember Tucson.
Present.
Councilmember Dee Simmons.
Present.
Councilmember Jay Simmons. Councilmember King.
Present.
All present through the quorum.
Please stand as you're able for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening. I will entertain a motion for agenda approval.
Aye, second.
Somebody, can somebody?
I saw move.
All right.
I'll support.
I just moved the second in. Any changes or updates to the agenda? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, thank you. This is now our opportunity for public comment. Clerk is going out to check our list, but you'll have three minutes to address council. Please state your name and address if you are comfortable. Is no one signed up? Is there anyone online? All right. Well, we will then close public comment and move right into part three, two of goal setting, two with Sharonda, three with us. And I don't know, city manager, if you wanted to say anything before we start, or should we just hand it over to Sharonda? All right, well, good evening, Sharonda.
Good evening.
One moment, please.
I just want to say, I have sunglasses on because I have my eyes dilated.
Oh.
I was at the eye doctor.
Okay.
Yeah. A little bright in here, so.
Okay.
Well, thank you for sharing.
All right, good evening.
Oh, good evening, everyone. It's good to see you again. So, thank you for having me back for the second time. I know you all are moving forward. And so hopefully today, it'll feel like maybe there's a little bit more clarity or some of the things that we talked about last time, there's a bit of a consensus. And so I did make another presentation. This one will be a little bit shorter, but I will still go over it with you as well. Yes, please.
This little fancy contraption you have under your wrap top?
Oh, yes. There's different heights, too.
Okay.
Awesome. So, welcome. Thank you for having me again. So this is sort of part two of our conversation. And if you could go to the next slide. And so our goals really for today are to sort of do two things. See if we can establish some financial goals and areas that we really want to identify as top priority for budget allocation. Establish and discuss some non-budgetary items, so thinking more strategically, like we had talked about last time. Some of the communication goals might not actually need to have like a budget allocation, but still maybe are a really important part of the conversation. So kind of establishing ones, maybe some goals for budget allocation. Then sort of those strategic and/or non-budgetary action items. And then maybe talk about what seems to be maybe low, medium, high priorities, or what's something that maybe is ongoing since you already are doing so much anyway. So for our agenda, which is on the next slide. I'll sort of share just a few updates of what came out when you all did the brainstorming with the sticky notes. We'll have a group discussion and then there is a printed document where we'll maybe do some prioritization. So you all will sort of rank from what you said in the conversation, what you said in the Excel document that you all worked on in the presentations, sort of ranking what you feel like are some high priority items. And then there is a sheet that I will have passed around, sort of called a parking lot. So for instance, how many of you have heard of like a parking lot? Well, obviously we've all heard of a parking lot, but for the purpose of a workshop. So yeah, so if there are ideas or thoughts that we don't get a chance to maybe flush out, but are important, maybe somebody says something, we're like, oh, that's really great. It necessarily doesn't maybe fit into the conversation right now. I want you to either, and I'll maybe pass some yellow sticky notes around. You can put it on that document so that we can capture it to make sure that it's not forgotten or sort of just lost in translation. I'll make sure that's kind of passed around in the meeting. And then maybe if people need it, I'll maybe keep it up here or people can do a little hand raise and then pass it towards one. And then after we kind of talk about maybe some of those ideas of prioritization, we'll have a group debrief and then we'll kind of talk about what next steps might look like. So, in terms of the things that came up, we did strategic priorities, financial priorities. We'll talk about low, medium, high, and then those recommendations as well. So if you go to the next slide. I think you all should be able to see this. So these are really the top five that came up in conversation. So I know that we started with three. And so when Frances and Andrew and I were talking and I was looking through the brainstorming, the sticky notes that you all put, there were kind of five that emerged. So the goal really today is to think about, can we sort of articulate three to five goals in these areas? So retain and attract staff really was probably the top item that in infrastructure that came up time and time again. And so what I kept seeing as themes were that people really want to focus on finding tools and resources to sort of streamline processes and modernization. Like I saw that pretty much every other sticky note, whether we were talking about strategic priorities or budget allocation. And so I do want to note that even when you see the prioritization document, some of the ones that will be bolded will be ones that were repeated and that really were kind of coming up as salient themes. And then implementation plan for a salary survey was something else that came up when talking about retaining and attracting staff. Having some form of performance incentives, increasing training opportunities, and then more fun. So that came up as well, ways to engage people and have folks feel invested, whether that be financial incentives or just having activities in time for community building and engagement. And then a non-emergency response plan also was resounding again. That came up in what people were noting as strategic priorities and also something that should be considered in terms of maybe thinking about in the budget. But definitely when it came to strategic priorities. So really hiring a police chief was something that came up a lot. And the neighborhood resiliency hub, that came up in different ways just to start it or another opportunity for community engagement. And then community engagement came up next. So really coming up with events, youth and seniors were mentioned by folks a few times. Really looking at how to connect with people who might not normally access city council meetings or might not feel like they're a part of the conversation. So thinking about groups in our community that might often be marginalized was also something that people noted as communities that folks really want to engage. So coming up with more opportunities and events. And then communication actually came sort of in conjunction with that. So thinking about ways in addition to social media, print, mail, other opportunities to reach out to people who might not normally find the traditional ways of what's kind of happening in the city. And then customer service was something that someone also mentioned. I think that also probably could connect to modernization of like processes and making sure that when people are accessing and utilizing services, they're having a positive experience or that's easy for them, just like it needs to be easy for staff, right? So that came up as well. And then expanding programming with Park Ridge also came up. And investing in infrastructure was again the other thing that was really resounding. And so people really wanted to address Water Street. I know that's something that's been happening, but that's something that folks noted as really want to pay attention to and kind of just continue that work. Updating facilities, so updating the buildings, thinking about security within the buildings. But really like buildings, building infrastructure, thinking about roads was also something that I saw. Roads and bridges come up, but really sort of investment in the building and the city facilities was something that was really noted. Police Department, Fire Department, parking lot, just making sure that those buildings are up to date and even with security as well. And then complete Peninsular Dam, that was something that also came up. And then revenue generation and housing were something that didn't come up maybe as much as some of the others, but were still sort of in the top five of themes. So continuing to talk about resources and opportunities around housing. And so I just want to take a moment and just get any comments from people around things that were lingering from the last conversation or just things that stuck out, any reflections maybe from our last conversation or something that you're hoping for for our conversation today. And I give, I wasn't a teacher, but I do have an educator background, so I give seven seconds of teacher silence. So if you're like, this is a little quiet, people need that time to usually process. But does anybody have any immediate like reflections or thoughts from our last conversation?
Yes. Yeah, I guess one thing that I was thinking about, like when I was reflecting on some of the questions. One thought I was trying to figure out is kind of the balance between, you know, right? Each of the departments, each of the council members put out goals, like things that were like, this is what we want to work on. And this process doesn't, you know, will lift up some things where there's some overlap, but it doesn't necessarily lift up all the things that people are doing, right? So I guess one thing I was just trying to have a sense of is kind of what that balance is because there's some things that I'm like, oh, that would be great, especially something that I saw in other people's stuff. Like Councilmember King had like reparations council, right? Like that's not something that necessarily, if everybody's not repeating, that's not making it to the list, right? But that could be something. So I'm just trying to think of, what does that look like? And yeah, how do, how do we think about that? And then the second thing, and maybe we'll kind of touch on this a little bit today, which is really kind of thinking about as we are starting this conversation of connecting our goals with budget, right? Like I still don't know necessarily what the goals cost. You know, like I have a sense of some of the things that I might know, but. So anyway, so as we go through that, I think that that's going to be kind of a mix and match as we move along. Because I know we're going to be trying to decide some of those things, but I don't yet have an understanding of like what we're working with. And then, yeah, so.
That's really helpful. Yes, ma'am.
I think maybe having a small conversation about that right now would be helpful so that we can finish this portion in the best fashion possible. So to respond to some of the questions that you have, Councilmember Simmons. So these are how we come to consensus on council goals as a whole that we want to move forward with staff, right? So that they know then for budget to come back with projections, ideas about the cost of the things we want them to do as a group generally. Some of the other things that may have come up on our individual list, we still have the opportunity to work on them as individuals with partner with other council members, bringing those things forward to staff, to council. But this process is for the council goals as a whole, it rises to the top, that we want to send forth our staff to work on for us because we agree that like these things are important for all of us. So there's nothing that needs to be left out per se. It's just about like, what are we sending them forth to bring back for budget versus the things we may want to work on in small groups or, you know, as pairs or individuals to bring forward later as a body. So the, the cost point is that once we complete this, then staff will go back and say, this is what we have, this is what we can do, this is how much it's going to cost. Do you want us to move forward with this? And that's how we establish what our budget is going to look like for the year. I hope that clarifies a little bit about what this process should look like for everyone.
And I think even having me come in, I know that there's been different, you know, facilitators or different ways you all have done this process. As we talked about how to have a more holistic approach to this. So for instance, you know, what we're saying is coming up with a consensus of what are the things that are our consensus, like what are the goals that maybe seem high priority or prevalent? But those other ongoing opportunities or ways to collaborate, it's not that they won't get addressed. It's just that they may happen in smaller pairs or it may be something that might be a project or it might be something, you know, like the conversation about Water Street or Peninsular Dam. Things that are happening already will continue. So it's not as if those things will get pushed to the side. It's that making sure there's consensus for the things that maybe are a priority thinking about this year, I move forward. One thing I'll note though, that I think I'd urge you to put on our parking lot document is, and that's for everyone, if there are ideas also around how to continue next year to make it a more holistic process, like maybe there are some different things around information around the budget or having ways to, you know, some, you know, we tried prep questions this year for council members to be able to ask departments. Like maybe there are some things that could look different that one, I can continue to add to like that recommendation document that you all will get. But that's one thing that I would invite to is if there's a way to continue to make the process holistic and clear for everyone, or ideas that are like, you know, I think we should try it this way next year. I would also urge folks to put that so that we can capture that too because sometimes we lose it like six months down the line. And so I think go in this meeting, go, oh, actually, we should be thinking about it this way. I just urge people to use that document as a way when people are talking, even with the process, to like capture ideas or recommendations, if that works. Anyone else? What stuck out to people last time, maybe what was, was helpful, anything like that? I just want to give people one more moment before we move on. Frances, I saw your head lift up, but I could be, I could just be picking. So what I'm going to do is, I'm actually just going to talk for a moment. And I will, I'm going to read off of my sheet again, some of those bolded things that came up. And then maybe we'll talk about you all looking at the prioritization document. Does that work? Okay, good. So I didn't put this in the document just because I think folks would go like, I didn't want it to be too messy. But I did have a document that is shared with Andrew and Frances. If you do want to share, this is just like the raw notes of what people put that I put in a separate document. But the pink notes again, that we talked about were around suggestions of budget. So staff tools, bridges, neighborhood, street maintenance and repair, Frog Island Parking Lot and Cross Street Bridge. Those are things that multiple people brought up. But Peninsular Dam, storm and sewage repairs, ADA improvement, DPS garage. Those things also came up. City facilities again was a big thing. I saw Park Ridge Pavilion, Freight House, capital improvements for the locker room and kitchen for some of the city facilities. And then the Fire Department, Police Department, Parking Lot, apparatus bay door for Fire Department. Those were things that came up under sort of capital improvements as well. And then balancing the budget, that came up a couple of times. There were multiple people, you know, that thought that that was important, which definitely is. And then mental health response, like having a non-emergency response plan came up. So unarmed response, hiring of a police chief, someone put neighborhood resiliency hubs, a few people. And that that will be something that maybe happens over time. Increasing community events and bringing people into the city. And then crisis intervention team that also came up. Let's see. My computer may show frozen on me. Those were the biggest things I just kind of want to reiterate that had come up. So do you all have the priority sheet available in your packet? Okay, so I will just go over this. And it was hyperlinked. I don't know if it was printed out. There's a example of value sheets that we might be able to pull up if people need it. So the first thing that I wanted you to do, and we'll maybe take at least 15 minutes to do this, but maybe a little bit quiet, if that's okay. I want you to identify maybe two to three words that you really believe should be core values for the city for 2023. And core values are something that don't maybe drastically change, but I think it's important to identify them because your values connect with where you're focusing your energy is. So think about maybe two to three core values. So that might be empathy, it might be community, it might be trust, it might be equity. But think about two to three values that you think you'd like to focus on or that you think the council should be focusing on, just as, as, as values, as things that you want to embody for this year. After you do that, so I'll give you the other set of directions. I want you to think about what you feel like maybe might be sort of the most pressing areas for the budget allocation and strategic planning for 2023. Now again, like we said, there may be some ongoing initiatives, things that are about to be completed, but I want you to rank each of these areas that you feel are really critical to support in 2023. And so as you can see, what I did was I sort of put the goals. I tried not to make the objectives super specific. I know that you all still have access hopefully to that Excel document. People had some really great specific action steps. I tried to have a little bit of specificity, but you know, I know there's always room for, you know, sort of to enhance those, so I tried not to make them super explicit just because you all were talking about these. But there are each of the strategic goal areas and then sort of noted objectives that you all have mentioned as potential action steps under each of those goals. And so what I want you to do is out of these goal areas, think about three to five, and I want you to rank your top objective or action item for each of these. So one maybe being most important, I'm going to put this in quotation marks, five being least important because clearly they're all important, but just think about top priority. There is a little line item that says other. So for instance, maybe for you, number one would be training opportunities. Maybe two would be something around like equity assessment. Like that might be what you put as other. And then three might be modernization of processes and tools for staff. But I want you to rank each of these sort of, and even if you don't have your top five, I want you to at least rank sort of one to three. And then I want you to put a check mark by the three to five action items that you feel like need to have a budget allocation. So I want you to rank the action items and then I want you to put a star by only three to five total that you feel like might need budget allocation or attention this year. And after that, I know I'm giving you a lot of directions, or I will repeat myself as you all go through the document. I want you to put a star by two ongoing items that maybe need to continue to be a part of your strategic priorities. So for instance, thinking about housing development, thinking about Water Street, like some of these things that have been a part of the conversation, I'd like you to put a star by those. Like I really want us to either complete this project or I want to make sure that it's not something that necessarily gets lost in the shuffle. So are there any, and I know once you look through the document, it might be a little bit more helpful, but are there any initial questions?
Do you want us to identify three to five strategic goal areas? Or just like circle them? Or like, how do you want, you have a check and a star? How do you want us to identify?
I want you to put like one, two, three. So just put numbers. No problem. And so numbers for like the action items that you feel like, how you would rank them? And then a check mark by just three to five total that need budget allocation. So that's, we're kind of doing symbols here. So numbers for goals and action items, check mark for budget allocation, and then a star by ongoing issues. And then Andrew, if you go to the next slide, it also has the, the directions are on the sheet, but it also has it on the slide as well.
Identify three to five strategic goals. So you want us to look at, I mean, like take one of the strategic goals and then rank the things that are within it?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh huh. So take one of the strategic goals and rank the things.
We're not doing other financial focus yet?
I'm sorry?
We're not doing other financial focus yet?
So for financial focus, put a check mark by those three to five action items. And again, if there's something that you don't see reflected on here or you feel like you want to add to it, you can put that and you can rank that or you can put a check mark by that as well.
Strategic goal number four, it says cleanup and development agreement. I'm not sure I understand what that reference is.
Repeat that one more time?
Yeah, strategic goal number four, it says cleanup and development agreement under noted objectives.
I think it's for Water Street.
Oh, for Water Street? Oh. Are we only doing the strategic goal section, not the financial focus area?
The financial focus area will be, so sort of the direction, like bullet number one is thinking about the strategic goal areas. And then bullet number two is the financial areas. And then number three is overall. Does that make sense?
I think, because it's like in this chart, there's what it says strategic goal number five, revenue generation. And then it's like financial focus area one, infrastructure investment. So we're just focusing on the ones that say strategic goal in front of them.
So there is overlap. So what I did was, just to clarify, the strategic goals came from sort of those pink notes that you all had noted. And then the blue came from the financial. And so if you want to put a check mark under the strategic ones, you can. But you can also put like a check back for like, okay, these need budget allocation where it has those financial items that people know.
I have one more question.
Hold on.
These three to five checks are for all of the focus areas, not just within each one. So in total, I have like five checks.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I know. This is also, let me clarify, this is also not like an official vote. This is also, let me clarify, this is also not like an official vote. This is to get to consensus, so. You hope you all stressed out so many more.
Next section where it says financial, is where you check five things out of the financial stuff that you want budget allocation. Oh shit, I was checking all over.
Yeah, rank those, yep. Cause I need to rank those.
And then check, check box, checks go in the next section on the financial focus.
Okay, I got it.
But you have five total, not for each section.
And then I will put you in pairs a little bit after this, so when you come together, there'll be a little bit of time to, to also go, oh, wait a minute, I actually get one more check mark. And Andrew, do you have that parking lot sheet printed out?
Yep, I give it to everybody.
We all have it.
Oh, perfect. So what I might actually, okay, yep, that's actually fine. So if you are finished, if there are ideas or thoughts that you have, um, you can, uh, write those in the sheet. Let me get a show of hands of who's still working on this. Okay, sounds good. It'll take a few more minutes. But for those of you who are finished, if there are ideas or thoughts that you feel like we might not get to in this conversation, um, make sure you put it in, um, that parking lot sheet. But if you do put something, please give them to us so that, uh, we can, we can hold on to that.
What does the parking lot mean?
Oh, so it sort of means like, like if you were putting something on pause. So essentially that sheet is, um, if we don't get to something and you're like, I really want us to, to remember this, jotting it down, um, there as sort of your own personal note page.
It's not a parking lot, it's an idea sheet.
AKA a parking lot.
A parking lot.
You're parking your ideas, Mr. Murray.
Exactly.
I also call it a bike rack, so. Yes, a bike rack. You know, I'm all about ease centering vehicles, so.
There's so many names. It's your idea sheet, parking lot, bike rack.
Stars and stripes are not going to look right. Oh, I was, I mean, it says start to ongoing items. I didn't know what to put, so I'm gonna put start. Oh, was there a symbol for those? Is there a symbol for our two ongoing items?
Um, stars.
I know, I was listening. All right, I'm gonna put mine over here because that is important.
And we'll maybe take two to three more minutes.
Are the stars in the strategic goals as well as the financial focus areas or?
Yep, just overall.
Okay.
Uh huh.
Look, I'm like, if I keep going, I'll just be adding more stuff.
And is everyone about wrapped up? Show of hands. Jazz hands? Made me very happy. I appreciate that. So this is what we are going to do next. I would like you in just a moment. And I know this may make people feel just a little anxious, so I'm just going to preface that right now. Again, this is not a vote. We will continue to talk. But I'd like you to think about what you put down. Talk with your partner about it and see if you all can come up with sort of five to seven overall, um, sort of strategic like action items. And it could be from this page, it could be, um, something separate. And then I want you all to think about if you can come up with, and they may be, um, there may be overlap, uh, sort of three to five areas that maybe need, um, attention in relation to the budget. So with your partner, I want you to see if you all in your conversation can come up with consensus. So sort of five to seven areas that maybe need strategic focus, goal areas, and then sort of five areas that need, um, attention in terms of the budget. And again, there may be overlap, but I'd like you and your partner to come up with a little bit of consensus. And then if you could, write them down on one of your pages. We'll go, yep, and we might have a trio, so that's okay.
Cause you're not in a pair, right?
Nope, I'm gonna probably walk around and be nosy. Okay, I did that too.
You did that too.
So, but when I had to write my strategic goal, my number one was to contain your track step. But if we don't have any, we can't do none of this that we want to do. So I made that my first one.
So there's a lot. I had all, I'm like all over the place. I didn't even get to this. I was like.
Excuse me, and they did, they did comparables from all across the state of Michigan for all our offices. To say what their salaries should be. And then they put.
So I have to be decided then.
I didn't know what the, the communication is.
You know, and I. Lot of money. You know, a lot of people, some of them just have more money.
Right.
So we decided we want to be, if you want to say high, low, medium. You get what I'm saying? So, yeah. And so that's why we want to provide other causes to stick money and make people want to do here. Because what can I just do with money? Right. So we don't want to keep concentrating on.
And I wanted to know if this was also related to, um, I don't know, because there was another item on here. This is like about, um, customer facing like, um, resident facing software or technology that's going to help us accept.
Right, right.
Like, you know, to do things online. Um, that's what I took it as, but.
I think this is something.
Yeah, I don't know, maintenance of our.
Squad days, I have to decide. Like I put it in the budget to get money. This was our alternative to doing, you know? Anyway, that's what that is. And I think that's why I gave it a three. At this point, in order, we're, we're going, we can approve. Rates again, you know? I think it's important though.
Yeah, I think that, uh, you know, we've, I've been asking for.
We're, we're running the same ballpark.
Interdepartmental. Visiting department.
I did a bowling thing. That's why I put it at five. But I'll keep doing it. No, I have it as two in the overall.
Yeah, I, I want to see that happen.
Yeah, I've only seen.
Which one was your number?
Social media plan, if that, but nothing.
Right, right. And, and having, having the rules for engaging.
Your number two is.
That's like a policy.
That's a, one page in the back.
Number two would be, uh, would be.
So yeah, I mean, and engagement and that's.
That would have to happen.
Yeah, I didn't even put nothing there.
Yeah. They have to.
You know, yeah, that's.
Our customer service is always.
Absolutely, real thing. I don't want to say a real thing, but you know, we can do that. I put customer service.
So yeah, I think that's definitely.
Treat our residents.
It's literally in the, yeah. Two.
You know, so that's why I picked that. You may not. So I think, you know, that's. Then number one was the first one. Because we can do, we can host those. Mr. Biden can do that.
I see this is.
But for the community, that's.
This is a priority, but that doesn't really take. Expanding program with Park Ridge.
Already doing that.
Yeah, that's why. Three. Would have to be the revisit, the connects. It's a priority, but it's.
I put revisit communications as two. Because I think we do need to see, look at.
I think this is.
And everybody don't, well, we really don't have. You know what I mean?
This is.
So I, that's why I put that, but I, expanding program in Park Ridge, I put that as three because WCC is doing a lot.
It was pretty clear. And that kind of lets it know that.
You know, and so I don't, I don't know that.
They provided. That's really like a third.
Part, you know, the, the initial.
I mean, we could, but how are we going to expand it?
No, I think it'd be.
Expanding program.
You know, that all went.
Yeah, so basically. Because they, they have a contract with us.
So it was like, you know, but, but from that is, is like, it's clear. So it was like, is that going to be duplicated?
I was telling him about expanding programming at Park Ridge, like we have a contract with WCC. So they do the program and they supply all the equipment.
But you know, these things are.
And they have a good program going. So I was trying to explain to him, you know, what, because they, we've agreed to them having so many after school programs and all this. And if we were to expand it, we'd have to hire people to work there and pay them. The WCC hires the people. You get what I'm saying?
Yes. Thinking about the revenue generation.
It would be, we would probably be infringing a program which is running very well.
We gotta find a way.
Kind of put our say in a program. And then we have to coordinate the programming. We're not into programming. We're not into after.
Yeah, that's what I was.
That's not what we do. Well, he actually said that that was his. So now I'm explaining to him, so maybe it's not.
Now it means way more sense.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah, so, yeah. He got established in here when Park Ridge. The city didn't have funding. Yep, and they were the ones that kind of rescued.
Okay.
Because the city got.
I don't mind taking my opinion.
Want to keep.
There's like.
They said, we'll run it, you know, we'll pay, you get what I'm saying? So that's.
So with the general.
It stayed alive. And I think, I think it happened before me.
It's actually.
That's, that's how we got.
I think, uh. Has to be addressed.
Building is ours. We pay for the. So and that's the kind of how it is at senior. So how are folks doing? So we let people feel like they've generated, um, sort of a pare down list. Yes, head nods. Can I get everyone's attention sort of back to the large group?
Or, I don't, I don't know that we charged that all the way.
So what I'd actually like to do is I'd actually like to hear, uh, from pairs. And then we'll have, we'll have a discussion, um, as well. But I'd actually like to hear from pairs, what are the things that you all, um, put on your list? And then I may ask other groups, you know, to maybe do like a show of hands or like some kind of affirmation if you put those things, um, as well. And I'm going to take some notes. I think I'm going to start over here and then we'll go around this way, if that works. No one's getting, no one's getting graded, I promise. Sounds good. Thank you. Turn it to both of you.
Um, Reagan and I had two areas we agreed on, uh, primarily, uh, goal number one and goal number four. So, um, like that, retain and attract staff and infrastructure. Particularly the modernization, training and salary stuff was all action items we had in common. And then the, um, secure funding for Penn Jam, cleaning water screening of the building facilities with the three action items. So yeah, there were other things, but those were the primary areas of consensus.
Thank you.
Oh, thank. Pretty, pretty close. Obviously modernization of staff tools. I think we, we all kind of took it a little different. Overall, uh, we need to update our staff tools. Uh, Water Street was mentioned, updating our building facilities. I don't know if that was. Our building facilities, just overall are, are a problem. Frog Island and Cross Street Bridges, obviously huge problem. Frog Island and Cross Street Bridges, obviously, huge problem. And, uh, the women's locker room. And so he muscled me because that's obviously his department. But I have actually assessed that facility and it is.
Thank you. I'll let you talk too. Um, so I think we agreed on strategic goal number one, retaining and attracting staff through modernization. Um, and then we kind of discussed, um, the previous salary survey and how we need to massage it to fit us. I think we also agreed on the police, oh, yeah, on the community mental health, non-emergency response plan. We agreed that hiring a police chief was our first, um, priority. And then the non-emergency response plan. And then investing in, uh, neighborhood resilience. Um, the other ones we kind of. We didn't all make it through because we, we had a little, um, learning session. That's why we talked, so that's good, yeah. So we had an opportunity to, and so us discussing, uh, Park Ridge. Mm-hmm. Uh, caused us to eliminate that, really, off of the list. Um, I think it was expand programming. So I took the opportunity to explain to him how Park Ridge was, you know, all of the parks was once eliminated. Us, you know, handling them because of the lack of funds, how it was rescued. And then how WCC handles our programming. And we're not in the programming business. We would have to have more people to run the programs and, you know, and they've supplied the equipment and it's all, it's just really a savings for the city that they do this for us and, you know, and maintain the building. It was an opportunity to talk to him. And then so we decided, well, I guess we can. Could kind of strike that off a little, you know, because programming, um, is done by WCC and they do a pretty, uh, good job at, um, programming. But if we ever wanted to talk to them about, you know, expanding in the area, they're always open. Gotcha. So it seems like it might not be something that goes in like a goal or a budget, but still just something to be aware of. Maintaining that relationship.
Not like pressing.
Gotcha.
Our turn. All right. Um, so some of our shared priorities, the, the initial goals were, of course, the modernization. We li- we listed city infrastructure in its totality because it's just so much needs to be done and we think it's important. So based on the money that we have, we need to do whatever we can do. Um, the, of course, the non-police crisis response. And we listed that in the top priorities, thinking about, um, partnerships rather than just thinking about it as something that we would fully have to fund ourselves. Um, but how can we work together, of course, with others? Um, and then we put down parks and rec slash community engagement, like, overall, because as we were looking back at like our list and the things that we wanted to, to talk about, um, we realized that like, yeah, we want, there are things that we want to do in community that we want to be city-led, but we don't have a place, right? We don't have a Parks and Rec Department. We don't have a hub for that. So how do we figure out? To, how do we have point people to like, you know, my, my, we have some different ideas. One of mine is like, I would like to have a citywide field day. Like, I think that'd be really fun. Like, you know, Jennifer wanted to do like a ki- a ward kickball tournament, like, things like that, like. Yeah, how do we, where does that live, right? While we could lead it, like, where does it live when we're not here to facilitate that every single day as like a council for an? Um, so parks and rec, not necessarily in essence, a department again, but how do we do things that fit that label without having a department?
And give our young people something to do too.
And give folks stuff to do.
Yeah. You just do.
It sounds, just do it, sounds great. But, you know, I mean, I, I couldn't put together the field by myself, you know? So, anyway. Um, and then the things that we want, budgetary, of course, update building facilities. Everybody's talking about your tour, Bonnie. Oh, my God. So, and we know there are other places that need support, um, for sure. We had city infrastructure listed again, um, roads, bridges, parking lots, storm sewers, et cetera. All of those things are really important. Um, the, the salary study implementation for staff, how do we massage it, figure out what needs to be done for retention? Um, and water street, Penn Dam. But for, for me, I listed that because it's, it's already ongoing and we need to complete it. So we have to make sure that we have the funds to finish what we started. Um, yeah.
Anything else, Jennifer?
The glasses, it's the glasses, you know? I work for her.
You want to speak or do you want me to speak?
Uh, either way.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sure.
All right. Um, so Steve and I kind of had some similar themes as to what was already brought up. Um, so, well, yeah. Um, so modernization of staff tools, um, implementation of, um, salary survey, which was discussed. And then, um, also looking at, again, infrastructure as a whole, we did not nail down any, like, specific area, um, necessarily. Um, and also continuing work on removal of the dam, um, funding for that, um, and continuing with that planning process. Um, and then looking at ways to continue our, and improve upon our, our communication and outreach forms to residents. Bring awareness of what's happening, um, and things that are going to, um, affect them. Did I, what did I miss?
Oh, it was all good.
Do y'all want to go down in front or do you want us to go? Okay. Um, all right, so, um, we might have a few more things too. But anyway, one of the things, so we identified as our top is around, um, the public safety, non-emergency response plan. Um, and, um, also investing in neighborhood resiliency hubs. We talked about electrifying spaces that could be used. So we also talked about that in terms of also updates to building facilities and things at the parks, like the restrooms and things like that, too. Um, we also highlighted, um, things under community engagement, um, as topping our list, uh, as well. Um, talked about the commissions, talked about communication. Um, under housing, uh, one of the things, so something that's not listed here, but, um, I added and I was able to share a little bit with Michelle about, um, which is the Housing Trust Fund. The city has one and, um, we've used it to purchase housing, um, so we could add more money to it. And anything else? I know we also talked about um, things like the police chief and modernization processes too.
Thank you.
So Mr. Barr and I had, uh, four areas of focus and then we kind of put budget items under those areas. So we had public safety, um, police chief, unarmed response team and neighborhood, uh, resiliency hubs as our, uh, budget focuses. For in- infrastructure, bridges, bridges, roads, et cetera. Um, and then modernization of processes and customer service. Uh, the third one was staff retention, improve city facilities, uh, and provide staff the tools, coupled with modernization to more effectively perform their duties. And our last one was the revenue generation in housing, but mostly looking at it from leveraging the state to actually make good on their unfunded mandates and provide us our revenue sharing.
You better say that.
That, that is ongoing.
Yes, give us our money.
So let me get some initial reactions since we got a chance to hear everyone. I saw that there was a lot of overlap. So what are people's initial reactions? What did you hear as sort of like overlapping, uh, themes? Like if we're thinking about, uh, sort of coming up with like five areas, um, of, of focus and that maybe need, you know, uh, also, you know, three to five areas that need, you know, budget attention, like what, what's coming up or what did you hear, um, in general when people were speaking?
Modernization. The non-police or the crisis intervention came up. And infrastructure.
A lot.
Infrastructure, a lot, building facilities.
Does anyone feel like there was something that was missing from, from this conversation or at least from what we've talked about? Do people feel like we've sort of at least named some, some consensus areas?
I, I was shocked on the staff level. I thought, uh, Chief Ufis and I would have pretty not similar goals. And for the most part, on the same line as every person sitting down this line is. And almost everyone's sitting up there. Our first goal was modernization. And so the last thing, I think Water Street is the other one. I think I heard a bunch of times.
Did it surprise people or I guess how did it feel to sort of feel like there was consensus, particularly between being on like the staff and, and then with council? Like, I'm just interested and curious to, to hear how that was for people.
I'd say it felt really good. I, I don't think that in like years past, I can remember we were just like completely deviating. But I have heard a lot more similarity than I feel like in recent years we've heard for what we want to do now.
I think it's interesting that revenue generation wasn't, wasn't listed per se on anybody's thing. It, it, you know, it seems like, you know, this time of year, we're talking about how we're spending money, but it's like there hasn't been very many conversations about how we increase revenue.
But he's so right.
The woman with sunglasses.
I know.
That was one of my, that was one of my additions.
Mm-hmm.
Um, was the revenue. And I only listed our two, but that was actually another one that was, um, high on my list. Because, um, doing the budget is one thing and having this big wish list. But I found that, um, it was very difficult to accommodate them without going into our reserves. And that is like one of the things I want to be our last resort. I want us to, like Reagan said last time, do it the right way, which is when you take out, you know, make sure you have money to accommodate it or money put back in. So we, um, I just didn't go for, you know, read everything we had, but it was also high on.
Yes, and.
So the, the city, as Mr. Barr has always said, it gets its funding through taxes, fines and fees. Um, we're, we're, we're kind of in a situation, can't really raise taxes, uh, without the, the, the voters approving a heavily override. And we can only increase our fees and fines so much. So it's very difficult to increase revenue, um, without outside help.
Right. We do in some areas with partnerships, like we partner with, uh, Ypsilanti Township. You know, with DPS and Salt and stuff like that. And we've done it with BNU. I think we just have to be more proactive in looking for ways that we can collaborate with other municipalities and that's a way for us to have a cost savings, maybe.
Yes.
I don't set policy, but I am a resident of the city and I'm going to talk about my position as a resident. Nineteen ninety, there was very little homelessness in Ypsilanti and we did not have mental problems that we're having today. If you look at Wikipedia, it says in nineteen ninety-one, Governor John Engler closed the Ypsilanti State Hospital. They later closed the forensic center. A lot of the people that they ho- housed, that they housed in those units, that they fed and housed and trained, uh, were left homeless and on the street. And the idea was that they would mainstream them and the local governments would be able to handle it. Well, they, they, well, we haven't because there's no money for it. I also believe that Ypsilanti has been a pace center in many, many ways over the years. One thing that we might do is ask, council could ask the Lansing to help us solve this problem and raise revenue in that regard.
You better say that.
And give us our, our, give us our revenue sharing, you know, dollars that we're owed, you know, that would be helpful. I'd like to point out also that, you know, the city, we're members of Warma, which is, um, I don't know what it stands for, but it's the county. Yeah, and so, you know.
An authority.
We're figuring out ways to collaborate with solid waste.
Mm-hmm.
So that all of us are using the same, uh, provider and we're getting a discounted rate. So these are ways, you know, that we can save and we keep, you know, some of our money in our own coffers. So we are part of organizations that are looking to save, you know, by all of us going in on one bid. So we're working on something like that, I think, and we're going to look at it for our next solid waste contract, if they're done with all the research. And so, you know, we just got to keep, we got to keep at it. But that could be a, a huge cost saving.
Yeah, I do want to stay on this for just a moment because I think that it, it connects, right? Like, we're hoping to take a holistic approach. We're talking about sustainability. There's only so much right now. So like that conversation around generating revenue was really important. Will that conversation be finished today? No, but I do want to note it because it is something that it seems like maybe, um, a, a need to come back to, to get to some of those goals or those priorities that always, you know, don't make it or we're searching for extra dollars. Yes.
Revenue generation is important, I think, almost all of us. But the more taxable value we increase in the city, our military rates roll back. So we're constantly at this, at the, at the hands of Hedley and Prop A, which are meant to conflict and keep down our tax rates. And so I would say that even though it might not seem it, modernization of staff tools, that we can make it easier for people to pay their fines and fees if they will buy more. And so maybe, but I mean, at least we make it harder. Why, I mean, you want to, you know, like Bonnie has said, and, and like they, we can't take credit card payments at these offices. There's, there's two places. Police Department, Middle Department and clerk's office. And so, and there's some very limited ways to pay online, but it's not, it's not intuitive or easy. And so the easier we can make it for people to pay, the harder you make it, the less they're going to probably do that unless they have.
And people will pay more money for convenience.
Oh, yes.
Facts.
More fees.
I will pay for anything that makes my life easier.
My paradoxical thinking about this is at the same time that I want to, uh, increase revenue, I want to decrease our taxes. Because I've seen that compared to other communities around here. And, and it's insane, you know, the percentage that, uh, that YPSI pays. And I know that influences people moving here and who can afford to move here because they can afford to pay the taxes. But also just, just, you know, decreasing that burden on, on residents and finding other ways to get to meet the financial demands of the city. While also reducing the tax burden. Oh, Lordy, huh?
Any other reactions or things that are coming up for people? Um, and if not about, uh, revenue generation, just in general.
I guess the, the question of strategic planning for these, I went through and, and kind of marked these off and some of them seemed like they wouldn't. They were straightforward enough. Or they were so loosely defined that I, you know, sometimes that, that means you should have a strategic plan about it, but it just seemed the, um, the topic were straightforward enough. But definitely the, um, strategic planning on the public safety and non-emergency response. Yeah, the community engagement, um, you know, and getting our communication strategies, um, that, that would require, uh, significant planning. And certainly the revenue generation in housing, uh, would require more strategic planning. Some of the other things, um, you know, the modern, I'm sure that's going to be department heads and, and, um, you know, strategizing on, on how that works. But in terms of, you know, the role for council and those things, um, that's what I guess.
Can I just, so, question?
Can I just so question or adding to that? So based on like those like three areas, for instance, would you then imagine that we would like have specific work sessions or something focused on those to kind of dive more deeply into them? And bring, like we're bringing solutions forward and then kind of coming to a decision around approach?
Yeah, I kind of, well, each one of them has a different, you know, balance in terms of what the public input is and what the drafting is internally. So like the communication strategies, you know, that would be both. I mean, short answer, yes.
I mean, I just, because I'm just thinking, because then that's something that we can just keep in mind and make sure that we're like looking at the schedule and try, like actually making sure that we're adding them to come back to it. And so that's why it was mainly.
Well, I think, I think that's a good question. So it seems like there's a couple areas that are pretty clear in terms of consensus. So it seems like a non-emergency response plan, thinking about public safety, investment in retaining staff and finding like tools for modernization, making processes easier. Infrastructure, particularly sort of investing in our buildings, in our parks, thinking about bridges. Wrapping up and completing things like Peninsula Dam and Water Street. And then what else did I put here? Thinking about like housing and revenue generation. And so those are sort of like the top three or five that I hear coming up. I'd be curious to know, you know, for the rest of our time together, how do you all? So those are sort of those bigger areas. What's the most effective use of our time together? Because I think that talking about either maybe some specific, more specific action points under those might be helpful. Or, you know, what ideas do you all have for the year to think about strategy and having these conversations? Like you said, the potential for, you know, working groups. Or, you know, in the month of March, maybe there's a particular discussion to revisit around these action items. What seems most helpful to move the strategic work forward and to sustain what has come up in this conversation?
If I might look at the charter, what we're doing today is we're trying to prepare goals for the city manager. So the manager can come back with a budget to finance these goals.
So generally, we haven't had the follow-up, you know, work sessions. The city manager would work on the budget along with department heads. And those areas, those goals that pertain to each department, then we would kind of strategize on what that, what we think that looks like and we put the budget amount. Now, we have not always articulated to council, you know, what that plan, like we may say, this was, this is for Mercury Software. Mercury Software is going to allow them to take payments. But we would not express that until it was budget time. Say, you know, on this line item, you see, you know, a big increase. And this increase, you know, is in alignment with goal number one. And so that would be the time that, you know, we would express that. But as far as going back to, you know, seek, is this the way you want us? You know, we've never done that. I don't know if that's something, you know, council would desire to do. I mean, if they did, that's fine, you know, with me. But we could also do it during the budget time. They could say, well, you know, what about this? You know, and then we'd go back and fine tune it, which is what we normally do. Well, maybe they didn't have in their mind doing it that exact way. You know what I mean? So as you said, according to the charter, I am to present. Then they are to respond. But the work session kind of, it just adds more meetings. If that's what council desire is, you know, I'm for it. That's pretty much all.
Traditionally, these have been back to back. We have the budget presentation, you get input at council. The next meeting, you come back with a budget. And how much does this affect the schedule of getting to the budget approval? If we separate that by another meeting and have that discussion in that interim meeting?
I mean, I think we could put an extra one in there.
I'm not, I'm not.
Yeah, so the goals had to be approved at the first meeting in February, so the February 7th meeting.
I think he's talking about the budget.
Yeah, and then the budget meetings are held in May, the first and second reading. So, and that's really just, that's the real strategy, the roadmap of where you're telling staff to go. Once you assess dollars to a situation, then we, the staff will start studying that area and then bring it back to council. So I think if there's going to be work sessions to really follow the budget approval and then we'll work on those areas and, you know, design that strategy in order to put those dollars forward.
You say it should happen after the budget is approved, the strategy? So then we could end up coming back amending the budget?
We could come back with.
I mean, that's fine. I'm just making sure that I put that out there because at that point, we'd be going back. So I don't know. It's up to council to decide. Would rather do it before?
I was going to say, so what you were asking is can we insert some type of work sessions between February and May or something?
Well, really between the initial proposal of the budget, the presentation of the budget, and then have discussion or work sessions between that and the final approval.
It's a little more accurate.
So we're just starting earlier, basically, is what you'd be wanting us to start the process for the budget a little?
Yeah, if that's what it would take or.
It would take us starting earlier.
You have to put the budget together.
Right, so yeah, I mean.
That takes quite a bit of time.
Yeah, it takes time, yeah.
Right, so that's the relimining step.
And then the budget must be approved by July 1st.
Yeah.
So if we've got May and June to, well, if the budget is presented beginning in May, then we've got May and June to work through it and approve it.
Yeah, so I mean, if council wants. The first and second reading could occur in June, yes.
I did send out the budget calendar to everyone so you could see, you know, what, you know, what staff will be working on and when you'll actually receive the budget. I can't, I don't have it with me, but.
Yeah, I'm looking it up.
It kind of tells you when you'll receive the budget. And I think we should have, you know, a date. I think we should be able to squeeze in something.
It looks like our first actual budget meeting is May, yeah, May 10th? No, May 2nd. First, hold public hearing on proposed budget on May 2nd.
And then the next one is? I'm glad you got a laptop.
Yeah. Our next one would be May, I think we have something during May, the week of, from May 10th to May 20th. Oh, that's your, so May 16th.
May 2nd, May 16th. Is there anything in the charter that says that these have to be back to back meetings for the first and second reading?
Yeah. Yep, so first reading is May 2nd, second is May 16th. And then we would adopt in June, yep, in June.
So if we, so there is another meeting in there at the beginning of June. If we break that to second reading and have on a regular council meeting, the agenda include discussion of the budget as presented? Or any feedback from initial investigation from staff and things like that? And it doesn't have to be a full working session. It could just be, you know, an extra hour or something like that to kind of get at that. Because we've, in the past, we've always gone back and amended the budget after it's been set. So that's, you know, that's a given that those things will come up. But I think having another step in there to just come back and have another conversation would be good.
What else is coming up for people? So it seems at least like there's some areas that have been maybe identified, you know, for a city manager to come back with and present to you all. But what other thoughts or feedback from, you know, department leads, the council, would just make, as we talk about strategy, as we talk about budget? Like what are other ideas or thoughts that could continue to make it a more holistic process? What I hear you saying is just having the opportunity for some regular updates seems like something that would be helpful. Any other thoughts or ideas that are coming up for people? Yes?
I'd like to ask the city manager if she feels that she's received direction.
I don't know.
I do. I think that as far as the budget sessions are concerned, Mr. Barr?
Got your question?
Yes. I feel that we're going to probably hear it at first reading. And then our next meeting will be for us to discuss maybe the things that I have put down or that I presented as ways to meet those goals, as action steps, and council will go over them and decide and say yes, nay, add, you know, whatever. Is that correct? Is that what you're? And then we'll come back for our final step. And then we would have already pretty much gone through that exercise together. And would be probably get through second reading faster. And if something happens, you know, we're not able to meet those, as far as me giving regular updates, I would let council know, you know? And then at that point, maybe suggest an alternative. That's what, what Councilmember Wilcox was saying. We adjust the budget a lot because things come up. And so, I like that because we'll be constantly looking at it. We'll be constantly monitoring it. And I'll be constantly updating because things change, we turn corners, you know? So I, I think I had it, Mr. Barr.
And I appreciate you asking that because sometimes it is, we have conversations, then it's go back and do this. But then there's maybe that step missing of clarity. So I appreciate that. Is there anything else that would be helpful for you or department leads in this conversation? Like in our time together? Any questions that you have or anything else that would be helpful as you go back and sort of, you know, help create this?
Actually, I like this because there's not a lot of assumptions. Coming together and we're getting clarity. So then our expectation is the same. Because I've noticed, you know, sometimes our expectations of deliverables are not always the same. So us doing this, it makes me feel a lot more comfortable.
So what I have for the calendar is first reading, first meeting in May, second reading, first meeting in June. Correct?
And that keeps us on schedule?
Yes.
I like what you put in one of these documents. I don't know where it is exactly right now, but, you know, quarterly reviews. I think in the past year, there have been times that council has approved appropriations. And then gotten to a point where it's like, yeah, there's small amounts of money going out. You know, it's the nickel and diamond thing. And so having, you know, Reagan and Francis present on a regular basis, you know, those budget amendments that have been approved? And, you know, what has gone past council in the last three months? Just so we have that and it keeps it firmly in mind how far we've gone off from where we have been.
With that presentation, do you have expanded funds and revenue to date at that? Or just the impact of budget amendment?
Yes. All of them.
I think Reagan could figure that out, you know, what an update would look like.
What other, actually, I'm going to have you go back to pairs because I think sometimes that's helpful. So for, I'm going to give you all maybe five minutes from what you've heard. What could be helpful moving forward to continue? What I appreciate you saying is that sometimes there's assumptions or, you know, there seems to be some alignment, but sometimes there's some disconnect. And what I also hear from the council is like having some of those consistent updates and being able to be more forward thinking. There's the ability to make those pivots, those adjustments, ask, you know, thoughtful questions, make decisions in a way that feels good. So what I'd like people to do is, and you can stay in your same pairs, think about, and then I will pass out sticky notes because I like sticky notes. What other thoughts or ideas do you have around just supporting the strategy process? Or finding more ways for staff and council to come together around kind of making sure that this, this approach, that people are on the same page? Like what ideas do you have or thoughts around keeping things consistent, having consensus, keeping people on the same page? So any thoughts or ideas that are coming up for people? So just take, we'll do three to five minutes and share with your partner. And then there are sticky notes that are coming around. And so if you do have any notes, you can jot them there.
Can you repeat that, what we're putting?
Yep, so you can put any ideas.
Any ideas?
Can you all hear me? Okay, yeah. So any ideas around continued relationship building, communication between department lead, staff and council? So things that will just make sure that you all stay on the same page around strategy and budget? Anything that you just want to make sure were noted. I heard a few people say, you know, that this conversation maybe felt different or that there were some benefits. So what other ideas do you all have that can kind of continue that energy, if that makes sense? And you don't have to jot any notes, but just if you do have any.
Meetings by goals. And it was like, where are you, you know, the accountability.
Like a check-in?
Yeah.
Well, I'm in the process.
And, you know, sometimes it'd be informal that, you know, with a group this size, you know, one on one, that's easy. But with.
Are you going to go? Okay.
Kind of having that opportunity.
We were talking about how like.
There's goals that aren't.
Do you know Jennifer, they still do those police car rides and stuff?
To incorporate some. Besides, you know, that interaction between staff and council. You know, if the public knows.
Not till spring, but.
That was always an eye-opener, sort of like going through their.
You know, having those opportunities there too. It's just like, you know, nobody comes to council when there's budgets, right? Because nobody goes through those things. But if there's a condensed, you know, summary every three months.
No, and if there's changes, we, you know, too, like if we're. Asable action, whether it be a large budget allocation or whatever, like what's the follow-up? Like I feel like we just move on, like we never hear about it until there's an issue.
Right.
Whatever that is, you know? We don't, I don't feel like we don't get, at least not that it gets that in the five months that I feel like I've ever seen before. Any sort of like follow-up that's.
Yeah, that's perfect. Yes.
Yeah, I know, it's a commission meeting.
What did you all talk about?
You're right about that.
I don't mind.
You know, every department head and just about everybody in the staff is actively looking for and writing. That incorporated. That goes with the revenue generation, right? You know, having that.
I know, I'm saying maybe.
I don't know, a pat on the back, you know? Where budget is, this is where our goals are. And then this is some of the things that have come out.
No, I think that's helpful. It's so different when you're like, oh, I made a decision about the buildings, but you've been in the building. You know, because I don't like that.
To date, you know, we've received, you know, this quarterly report, we've seen.
Yeah. That's helpful. That's helpful. I'm going to keep you dropping.
I mean, I sat down with uh, Jessica.
You know, there's, you see a bag above us. There's a window you can't see in the. Look out.
Goes out every.
Hearing it.
And I was just.
You know, either God or. But I can't lose track of that during.
In the, in the newsletter or in where?
I think finding other ways to.
Employees.
Getting them to come to a meeting is one thing, but you know. How do we advertise that to get people to show up so they understand? So like these conversations with people who just complain about taxes, they clearly, you know. I've been watching some of these things on, you know, certain chats and it's just like. It's clear to me that they don't understand where their money's going to.
And we add that to the board meeting? Is that what you're saying?
I think that's a good thing. Can you email me that?
Election. Taxes are high and we're not getting.
But throw that sticky away. That was my, oh. Put that sticky on the other side disregard. Yeah, the one you're gonna write on.
Maybe that needs to be mailed. I would love to go back to some sort of quarterly or monthly, just like updates via. I know it's expensive, but that's how you answer people's questions though. That's how, that's literally telling you what's happening, what's going on, where your money's going.
I've seen you saying it today.
It takes a assumption.
Yeah.
Pull this off because it's a good fan, but that's, you know.
Oh, you can never use it.
No, you can have it. But you know what I'm saying? Maybe you can heat her. Don't go over here because my partner had. Yes. I use it this way. I don't know. I was trying to pull it off and look like.
I'm actually not.
You know, it's my favorite color. It's true. It's okay.
I know.
I'm.
The last time around, I was like, oh, that's what people were, people were doing. That's not what I was.
Oh. If I could get everyone's attention, back to the large group. I feel like there were some good ideas uh, that came up so many times. Particularly for organizations and entities that are so busy. It's a lot of the doing and it's a lot of putting out fires. Or sometimes having to do that like piecemealing or penny pinching. So sometimes having even just a couple of minutes to think about processes for more reflection or being intentional about how people get information, how people build relationships is really helpful. So I appreciate you all, even now taking this time to like zoom in and do like the really sort of like tangible action steps. Like let's talk about goals. Then it also pan out and help think about those bigger picture things to establish good relationships with, with one another. And make sure that everybody is coming here and feels like they've got the tools they need for their role. So I just wanted to say that. So maybe ask for just a couple pairs to share um, ideas um, or what came up in your conversation. Yes?
Well, I think, I mean, I may have two kind of simple ones. I think we'd like to, we wouldn't mind hearing budget updates. Like we love this uh, council information letter. Because that's actually really helpful. I think they're getting an understanding of kind of what's going on, you know, each month. But just, you know, I think budget, some of the budget, because sometimes with questions and reading, it's not as easy to understand. So that is, I guess we'll say something that that could be, could be helpful. Um, it doesn't have to be monthly necessarily, just kind of like quarterly or something. Um, and then the other thing, I think it's helpful for us to understand, like the staff and stuff. Like I was just at EPS and had a really awesome uh, tour from Bonnie. And so when you go there and see, um, you know, I, I was in our facility, we're janky, you know, kind of. We haven't invested, right? We haven't had the money. So when you go see, you know, the roof gets warped and the, you know, other stuff and it's really, you know. Yeah, we gotta, yeah, focus on those and take care of this stuff because, you know, we want to have uh, safe facilities, you know? Possible facilities for our staff to be working in, um, stuff like that. So I think it's really eye-opening and brings home kind of the realities of like, you know, focuses that we should not be, you know. Things we should be prioritizing, um, that we can't ignore. But it's easy to ignore if you're not paying attention, so. So for us to go.
Yes.
And go take interviews and talk to the staff and uh, just not to micromanage, not invitation to micromanage anybody. Invitation just to learn and understand, so, yeah.
No, I think, I mean, just like the, the women's uh, you know, restroom example. It's really easy to go, oh, this is something that needs to be fixed and never go into a space. And when you're in the space and you go, oh, this needs to be fixed like today. There's something really different about making a decision when you haven't seen a space, when you haven't physically been in the location. When you haven't gone, oh wow, like this parking lot is trash, right? Like it feels different because sometimes I know, even from the perspective of, you know, uh, staff. Sometimes when you feel like you're either saying the same thing or you're like, man, people don't really understand. There's such a difference when you're able to sort of physically be in that space and talk and get feedback and just hear and observe. So what I hear you all saying is more time to go look at facilities, observe. And like you said, not to micromanage, but just to have a better context. Um, would help you all in terms of decision-making and, and moving things forward.
Yeah, and I just want to say, we don't have a locker in the police department, is that right? Or the plaza kind of jump.
We do have one, but um, what we should just say, I, I would love everybody to stop by and take a look at.
That's important to me as a former female police officer and, you know what I mean? That we wouldn't have something that's equal, you know, to or whatever. But yeah, so I would definitely encourage you, but I think we also owe it as council members. We work for obviously the citizens, but you know, also staff here. We have an obligation, you know, I think. So it includes us to listen and hear what they have to say and how we can figure out how we can support them too. Because that's how we also serve our, our city and our communities, so.
Thank you. And yes, you were going to say something.
Well, I think what this means is that we want to be proud of our city and our staff and our facilities.
Hmm. Thank you.
I tell it a little different and it's how, how we are communicating with.
Hmm, hmm.
Um, and is the CIL, Francis and Chief and I were just chatting. Is that the best use of our time to put that together? Is there a better way to do it? How many people here read the CIL cover to cover every month? I am very. I did not, I did not realize that.
I am too. I, I really, I, I'm not gonna say, I said, okay, I'm gonna do it every month, but I wonder how it's like.
It's actually my favorite email that I get.
Honestly.
Really?
Truly.
Never mind.
It was like, I'm going back in my hole.
Oh, no, no. I, I, look, I didn't know if it was useful because we never actually hear about it and like when. No, no.
There's something else gonna pull out today.
This actually makes me really happy. You know that, that, because it is a pretty long document.
It's a one-stop shop.
You know, everything you guys have been doing, it's amazing.
Please forgive I said, Andrew, will you?
To add on what you were saying though, because I was thinking about now that I've been contributing to the um, newsletter. I'm like, I wonder who is reading this because, you know, I don't know. I don't, haven't gotten any feedback on it either. So I think that's actually a good assessment for, well, something good for us to hear to let you know, like. We noticed that you've been doing X, Y, or Z, or that I read in the CIL that blah, blah, blah happened. Because we, I do read it. Um, yeah.
If, if this, if this is the temperature, a lot of the community is reading this. Because I, we always wonder.
Well, I don't, let's not get crazy.
No, no.
No, it will only give you uh, data on how many times a form is filled out. But I mean, we could check to see who the subscribers are, but we can't check to see how many people read it.
When Tom and them put it on Facebook, can you see?
Probably. I don't know.
Yeah. Oh.
I think with our, our news flashes, so when we send out that email, you, you should be able to see how many people put up a lot of it. I'll tell you the other thing I like about this, the council information letter too. I feel like it gives me talking points potentially for when citizens are asking me about like, oh, this project or whatever. Because there'll be sometimes updates about that and I feel, you know, better informed about this, the little things I might not have known about. So I don't know, to me, like, but it's actually the best. You guys notice that DPS's section was formatted differently than others last month? This is actually a test, if you guys have to.
Love it. That font. Wow, it's really great.
On line three.
I said I read it within the month, not necessarily.
Is there anything else you guys want? I don't, but I, I do this, but I get it here in the format and I can call it format and I'm going, I don't get any feedback. Is there something else you guys want?
I like knowing how many calls for, to me, this is stuff, you know, because the, like, oh, what are they doing? You know, and I can say, do you know how they have this many calls for service? You know, again, even when I'm talking to, but also it helps me to understand, like, I guess you guys aren't just sitting around sleeping all day. Well, the police are patrolling in their car. No, I'm kidding. I just. No, but you know, so it gives me perspective. So I don't know. I, I'm good. I like to know when I'm fires and, yeah.
Every time I see Andrew's section, I cringe, only because of all the vacancies on the boards and commissions. I'm like, cringe.
Oh, yeah, I was on vacation.
Yeah.
But that's also.
It's helpful, but it's so cringy. But not your fault, but of course.
I, I have a question. Um, Shamron, it was mentioning, mentioning to me um, a department spotlight. How would council feel like on, you know, once a month? You know, on one of our agendas that we have a spotlight for a department? And they're just, you know, telling you their accomplishments, what they're working on, what they're doing. They're just appearing before you. Is that something that you'd feel okay if I added to the agenda?
Yeah, one of the notes I had here was um, you know, every department head is, is actively working on grants. And, you know, getting along with the, the, you know, wherever are we in the budget? You know, and where are we with the goals that, that didn't get prioritized? In that one meeting is having that. But in addition, you know, those grants, you know, it's like, where do we stand in terms of the summary of uh, you know, for each department? You know, it's like what grants have gone in, you know, what have we gotten, what have they been used for? Because I know there's a lot of hard work going on here and so like, and, and celebrating that when, when those grants come in.
Yeah, yeah. So yeah, I think that's, that's good, what you're saying, because it would be good for you to just hear. You know, these are the grants we're working on. This is what we've done. And it just keeps you in a loop because we can't assume that, you know, right? So adding these spotlights will keep us connected, so.
I'm okay with that too. I feel like, I feel connected actually through the information letter. No, seriously, because it is helpful. I guess my only thing is like, I feel like people have worked enough and like you guys are all here at this meeting. So it's hard for me to ask you to come to like one more extra meeting, you know what I mean?
Well, they're supposed to be here.
The folks that are already showing up.
Yeah, they're already.
Because I feel like, you know, when we have all our boards and commissions, someone's got to be minutes for a lot of them. It's like, oh, yeah.
Oh, no, not just, just department heads. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that's fine with me, but I feel like pretty connected with this stuff, like with the updates.
Okay, but then this also lets the public know because.
Right. That's what I was gonna say.
They don't get the CIL.
I got so much feedback, like just from people that I saw about um, Chief Hobbs when he made the cost savings for that truck. Like people really heard that and like were applauding, like the work that was done on that. So I mean, that was something that, you know, it came up in your presentation for the goals. But if, I don't know how re- I can't remember how recent it happened. But like if it had happened like in November, that'd have been cool to present for that month for the fire department, right? Because people will want to know something like that. So again, more kudos to you, Chief Hobbs, because people are so excited.
And I think that's coming from the communications side. Um, recently had a meeting with the communications manager to kind of like, you know, point out, these are the things you should be covering. You know, these stories and these are the things we need to get out. So we're trying to refocus.
That'd have been a cool.
And we realized where some things weren't caught, you know, which is a, which is a good thing. You know, we're evaluating how effective we've been in communicate, and some things we haven't. And so we have to go back, you know, and refocus to say, these are the things, you know. And I know I saw something in here saying, you know, about working with the communications manager. And so I took that literally and, you know, had a meeting and said, let's work toward, you know, and, and define. What this communication needs to look like. So that's that. And the, the good thing is, I think having these conversations goes, it's really great to hear folks go, wait a minute, this is helpful. Because if you've been doing something for a year, three years, however long, and you get that affirmation that people are actually listening and taking that in. Or you having the opportunity to hear like what you all need and what you all need to, to support one another is, is really important. And even with like department spotlights, I, I've sat on boards before or even on the end of, you know, um, a department lead for staff. You know, saying for five minutes with three slides, this is what we're proud of, this is what we're working on. Um, this is what we might need support with. And giving people an opportunity for five minutes to ask questions is really more meaningful, I think, sometimes than people understand. And it's not this like, and at least the way that I've seen it, not a 10, 20-minute presentation with, you know, data and graphs. It literally is just a touch point for people to get information. I think I've seen that work really well. But at least I hear that you all are finding ways to connect with one another and that what you're already doing is really helpful. And sometimes that feels good to just know, but that what you're doing and what you're working on um, is really helpful. So I do want to do, so it is 7:45. I want to take a moment to just kind of throw out before we go to our closing. Um, thoughts, suggestions, anything that's coming up for people?
So my question is, because this is our last meeting.
Hmm.
I think we need to get a consensus on those goals. I mean, we, we didn't like vote on them like, we didn't say, you know, to see which would be one, two, three, four, or five. We know that we're gonna, we're gonna approve them. And then we're also gonna go and establish, you know, some, maybe some action steps under them. Council will look at them and say, yes, these are good, or no, they don't. But I think we, because we're not gonna have you anymore in doing this session, right? Think this is it. So yeah, I think we do need to establish those prioritize, do a prioritization.
And we can always connect, obviously, before. Thank you. But yeah, no, I think that's helpful. So we're just gonna, would it be helpful for you to share out what you've heard as sort of the three to five? Um, in, in this moment, if that's okay?
Um, I think that the strategic goals that were named um, are probably correct. I think we could um, we need to make them more clear because now they're just bullet points. It says um, so, let me spot one. Like, uh.
I know the, the.
Like strategic goal number three just says community engagement. That pretty much says nothing. So I think, you know, we'd have to um, kind of clarify what that means. And then put the, you know, steps under it after we meet. I, I think some of them are more straightforward. Like we say, retain and attract staff. I mean, we just need the wording is what I'm saying. I think that the goals are there. Do you guys agree? We just kind of like need to complete what they say, like investing in infrastructure. Is that enough?
I hear what you're saying. Hmm.
So like you're saying drill down to, when we're talking about um, infrastructure, are we talking about what bridge, what road? Like that, that kind of?
No, I'm just talking of the general goal. Like, you know, we just listed our five goals. One would be um, investing in infrastructure, um. Update our city facilities, you know, or something like that to be a little bit more in detail.
Sort of like a sentence, like a.
Like a sentence.
Okay. So maybe is it helpful if we just go through them for a minute? So if we were to think about a statement for retain and attract staff, what would that, what would that statement look like?
What would that sentence look like? Retain and attract staff. And the two things that I heard under that were about. Well, because you could couple customer service in there, you know? Do you know what I'm saying? And capture that.
Well, but I was thinking, when you said that, the first thing that came to mind was like retain and attract staff by ensuring they have the tools necessary to do their jobs well. And then providing performance incentives based on that perform, based on that work.
I agree with that as well.
And I am typing this too.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no. So what I hear you saying. So what I hear you saying as a potential statement is retain and attract staff by ensuring they have the tools necessary to do their jobs well, and by providing performance incentives.
I like that too.
I will let you know, this is one of my specialties, so keep it going. No.
We're gonna keep going for our last few minutes. So, um, I know we have community mental health and a non-emergency response plan. If we could think about an action statement, what would that look like? And just even whatever I saw as like a theme, think about those sort of key objectives that were highlighted. Like if we could put that in a statement, what would that look like as an action statement? Yes, Andrew?
Identify, uh, community partnerships to achieve, uh, the goal of a regional number in the response plan.
That's real good.
You said that last part one more time?
You got it. You got the words.
You said, and facilitate.
And facilitate the creation of, of a response group.
A, of a response team?
Yeah.
So I will repeat this one more time. Identify community partners to achieve the goal of a regional non-emergency response plan and facilitate the creation of a response team.
That's perfect. Yep.
I love when I, I, I can feel you all go get energized. Like, yes. So if we could talk about community engagement, a few things that have come up with community engagement are around communities that aren't often engaged or marginalized communities. Um, I've heard, I've heard youth, I've, I've heard, uh, young folks. I've heard, um, customer service come up, communication. So taking all of that in, what would be maybe an action statement? If we're talking about 2023, when it comes to community engagement?
Well, um, I don't know, you know, I'll just jump in and have it. So for this one, I was thinking about, um, engage the community, um, through our commissions, uh, neighborhood hubs, uh, and, um, through a variety of communication, um, outreach tools.
So engage the community through our commission's neighborhood hubs and through a variety of communication and outreach tools.
We gotta create neighborhood hubs, right? Or do we have them? We kind of have.
I would, yeah, I think it's both of those. Yeah.
Okay.
I think you're right. Like, I think some of it, it's like, I think more formali, like formalizing and resourcing those like hubs would be a part of that. Yeah.
Would we revise that statement in any way? I'm just throwing it out there. So, um, what Councilmember Simmons said was engage the community through our commission's neighborhood hubs and through a variety of communication and outreach tools.
There's a comma between commissions and like neighborhood hubs. But, you know, I guess then it could be, I think at the end for all of it, because I think the same thing for like our communications outreach tools. Like we have some, but there's some things that might need to be created or revamped. So, uh, maybe something at the end is like, you know, and fill the gaps where, where, where we see them or something like that.
Sorry, as I type, it might take a minute. Okay, so, um, and we can wordsmith this a little bit, but I've typed these, so I'll make sure, uh, that our city manager gets these. So engage the community through, um, our commission's neighborhood hubs and through a variety of communication outreach tools and work to, um, fill gaps or address gaps as we see them. How does that land for people?
You still have questioning eyes.
I was, I was thinking very similar.
As we see them.
Yeah.
It's not clear.
Not specific enough?
Yeah.
I don't know how to say this either, because I also feel like there were, community engagement was like, we looked at it differently than just that down here too. Talking about like literally, um, like strategies around, um, like activity.
Yeah.
Right? Not just communication.
Right, yeah.
So you could put activities as a comma, right? You said neighbor, commissions, comma, neighborhood hubs, comma, events. And activities, comma. Right.
Like stuff we might know about.
Right.
All right, we got a, those are the next one here.
So.
We say fill gaps, we're trying to be holistic, right? We're trying to meet the needs of a variety of people. So what word would we use, um, instead of fill gaps, you know?
Yeah.
So we're doing all those things in order to provide something, whatever, to our community. Or, or, in order to provide, you know, I'm looking for that word.
There's a few things that are sort of coming up in my mind. It's either identifying gaps or identifying opportunities for increased engagement. Or what you're saying is, um, to provide, um, I don't know if it's quality services, but, but to, to provide, um, people the opportunity to have like quality services or like a thriving living experience within like the city of Ypsilanti. So I'm just throwing a few things out. I don't know if other people have any additional thoughts.
To increase the pride as well, maybe. I mean, because community engagement, whether it's be an event or just us comments for the community, I think we bring pride to the community as well.
I mean, is it possible, maybe we can drop off the thing about filling gaps and just know that, you know, we're putting forward like what it is we want to see and that we know that that might take some adjustments or some, you know, different things that we might need to do in order to reach it?
Yes, let's see. So engage the community through our commission's neighborhood hubs and through a variety of communication and outreach tools. Two, because I think there's maybe an action, is it to increase, um, pride, belonging, support? Does that make sense? Like, I think that.
Also, uh, the events and activities.
Engage the community through commissions, through a variety of communication and outreach tools, events and activities.
Communications, instead of a variety, you know, like just start listing them through activities, through communications, through neighborhoods, subs, you know, like a list of things, um, to expand community. Sustainability. Now, I just want to use that. I just want to use sustainability. It doesn't go there though. Engagement. But did we already say engagement?
Yeah, we started with engage the community through.
What if we just switched the, the order of those words? Sustainable community, to sustain community.
That works.
And then put the engage at the end. It's almost sustainability. Yeah.
And say the, sustain our community through commissions, neighborhood hubs, and through communications, outreach tools, and vent some activities to.
Engage.
To engage.
To engage.
Our residents.
I thought it was the two was to sustain community.
Oh, to sustain community and leave engage.
Engaged.
Oh, I see.
Got it. I think I've got it. Our residents. Engage our residents through commission's neighborhood hubs, um, let's see, communications and outreach tools, events and activities to sustain our community?
Outreach tools. What outreach tools?
Someone said it.
What is that?
So, um, you want like an idea or, so as an example, like I think about, um, so I had a community like award event, uh, last week. Um, and during that, uh, a resident had what I think is a really good idea, which is to really lean into the little libraries that are around town and using those as a, a hub of communication where people can share information. Um, and then kind of taking that further. So she was talking about having a space to post things there. But another idea too, in addition to that, would be to be able to put like a QR code that would go somewhere. Maybe like a link tree or something where you can have some standing information from the city that would be there. But then there would also be things that could be specific to those, the neighborhood, or different things that might be upcoming that they could just access from that. Um, and then it's a way for people to feel like they have the communication like right there.
That just be under communications though?
Yeah, I mean, I think of that, but I think of like, to me, it's like just different ways of connecting with people. So I think it just depends on like how expansive you think of it, right? Like outreach could be both like through pen and paper communications. It also is through like our meetings and stuff that we have. So I think that those kind of go together, but it doesn't matter to me that outreach tools is listed. It's just knowing that, to me, it's important that it feels more expansive and it's not just like we put it on the website because that we know is not enough. And I also think it's important for us to understand our different roles in helping with outreach, right? Like I think it's a different outreach that city staff does that should be different from what council members are doing.
And it's different from an event?
Yes, I, I would think so, yeah.
Okay. So it is eight oh one, so I do want to do a time check. Do we have ten more minutes?
Next, we still have two more to get through, right? Just two more.
Well, you have to ask council if we can continue.
I mean, it's still our meeting at seven o'clock. It's not.
I heard friends say you have to ask council. I'm like, we need to finish, so.
We just got two more.
So the next one we have, um, is, um, our, yep, investing in infrastructure.
Invest in infrastructure to enhance community pride and to make it safe for those that live, work, and play in the city.
I know that's.
Say that one more time and then I, I heard lots of.
Invest in infrastructure to enhance community pride and to ensure those that live, play, and work are.
Did you say attract people?
No.
Oh, we said something about safety.
They do so safely.
But I want to ask my favorite infrastructure person, Bonnie Westler. To add on that, Bonnie, did you hear that? So everything that Andrew said. All right, we have a surprise. Last thing, I'm good.
So I will read it one more time and then you all let me know if I have missed something. Invest in infrastructure to enhance community pride and ensure that those that live, play, and work may do so safely.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, that's perfect. You got the last one too, Andrew?
I know, I was like, Andrew, you were working on that one.
Generate revenue to provide adequate city services and examine different housing opportunities to meet a, uh, a multi, um, multi, multi-generational need and economic need.
I wanted to put equity in there somewhere.
That's on my list of values.
Oh, okay.
No, I think I should be in there.
I do, I think we do because affordable housing, you know, equity has a lot to do with it. Just don't know the word.
Equitably.
Equitably. Can you say that one more time, Andrew? Generate revenue to provide adequate services.
To provide adequate services and examine a multi-generational housing, um, multi-dred-generational strategies to ensure adequate housing, um.
Did you say equitable housing?
Provide equitable housing for multi, or for all, all those that want to live in the city.
She was so good the first time. Y'all, we had messed them up.
He was on the roll.
He was on a roll.
Okay, say it to me one more time. I'm typing people. Or you can email it to me. That also works. Perfect. Okay, so I think those are the five action statements. How do we feel? Give me some sort of physical movement, head nod, jazz hands, thumbs up. I just want to see at eight something PM, how you all are feeling. Awesome. So I do, I always like a closing because if you have an opening, you should have a closing of any kind of conversation. And so, um, we don't have to hear from everyone for the purpose of time, but if people do want to share, that's fine. Andrew, could you go to the last slide? Um, so for next steps, I will take these notes. I will capture them. I will connect, uh, with our city clerk and our city manager, um, as they've been so lovely in, in this process. And I thank you all for inviting me in. And so I'll, I'll send, uh, kind of some updated recommendations. And we can always talk about future ways to support or engage. I'm always happy to connect with individuals one-on-one as well. So you will get, um, sort of an updated version, um, of the document that we have. But as we close, um, I'm just wondering, I'd like people just to reflect on, um, it should be the closing. It should be a slide, the slide that says closing. So I'd like people to reflect on one of these three prompts. So I'm grateful for, I'm committed to, I'm excited about. So if anyone, maybe a few people, if they want to verbally share, um, not all three, but just maybe one of them. Like what are you maybe grateful for from our conversation today, committed to or excited about? Yes. Thank you.
I'm excited about the fact that it seems like all of us in the room, council and staff are basically on the same page.
Um, I am committed to working together to do all the things that Andrew wordsmithed for us.
Anyone else?
I am committed to carry out to the best of my ability, the goals that council adopts.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Well, if there are any of those, um, any notes that you took in terms of like, please feel free to give them to me or any ideas, if you didn't fill out that parking lot sheet, that's fine. But any ideas that, uh, we didn't get a chance to address that you want to make sure we hold on to, if you tear that sheet off and give it to me, I'll make sure to type that so that you all have those. But I just want to express gratitude. I'll turn it back over, uh, to, uh, Francis and Andrew if there's anything that you all want to share.
To the mayor.
Oh, if you haven't, you have anything closing, city manager or city clerk?
No, I don't. As soon as I receive, um, the documents from her, uh, Andrew and I will put it in, uh, resolution form to bring to council. And at that point, you can, you know, feel free to revise or take statements out before we adopt it. But I just want to thank, um, Sharonda and I want to thank council, um, for allowing, you know, me and Andrew to pick a facilitator. And I want to thank her for doing a good job.
Also, yeah, we'd like to thank, thank you, Sharonda.
Thank you for having me.
So yes, thank you. This is definitely a different process for us that we, we haven't done it this way before. And so, you know, you learn new things and tidbits here and there that, you know, we haven't had a chance to have some of these dialogues in past processes that I've been a part of. So thank you. And also thank you to the staff for engaging with us and like being open and honest and asking really great questions as well. Like Chief Uka said, like we heard things from you too and had questions from you that maybe we haven't always been able to have dialogue about. So, and of course, thanks for, council for engaging. Absolutely. All right, council, do you all want to take a second, a break, or we want to keep going?
Take a break.
Okay, let's take a fiver. So take a five-minute break.
Thank you so much.
Oh, okay.
All right, the meeting has been brought back to order and Mayor Potem Will Cox, and I believe you have our first resolution.
Oh, first resolution.
Yes, sir.
Resolution number twenty-two-three dash zero-eight, and this is a long one, folks. So stay with me. Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the city of Ypsilanti will file an application to the Michigan State Historic Preservation Office, SHPO, for the certified local government grant program in the amount of $50,000 for the resurvey of the Ypsilanti Local Historic District. And whereas the city of Ypsilanti acknowledges that its. And whereas the city of Ypsilanti acknowledges that the Certified Local Government Grant Program is an expense reimbursement program, the city of Ypsilanti authorizes expenditures in the amount of fifty thousand dollars for the project work with funds from the city's general fund. And whereas the city of Ypsilanti acknowledges it will be responsible for paying invoices as they become due, and that reimbursement will be made upon completion of final project work. SHPO acceptance of the final completion report and the SHPO audit and acceptance of financial documentation for eligible costs. And whereas, upon approval of the application by the SHPO, the city manager or designee shall be authorized to sign the grant agreement, any necessary grant agreement amendments, and other agreement-related documents. And whereas Ellen Thackeray, preservation planner, is appointed as the grant project manager who will oversee the day-to-day grant management and grant administration duties, including vendor selection and coordinating the payment of vendor invoices. And resolve that the city of Ypsilanti directs the preservation planner to file an application for a grant for the SHPO Certified Local Government Grant Program for fifty thousand dollars. And resolve that the city manager or designee be authorized to sign the grant application, any additional grant documentation, and to take any additional administrative actions necessary to implement this resolution. And resolve that City of Ypsilanti, Ypsilanti City Council hereby adopts the proposed budget amendment included in this resolution. And I so move.
Second, oh, moved and supported. Good evening, Ms. Thacker.
Hello, good evening. I want to just be really brief and just offer myself as a resource to answer any questions. That resolution was not written by me, it was required to be that long. So, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I thought I might just explain what the CLG program is and why this is important, but I don't know if that's useful.
Yes, please.
Okay, so very quickly, the CLG program is a partnership program. It's a, it's a preservation planning partnership between the National Park Service and local governments. And Ypsilanti has been certified since two thousand and two. And it's beneficial for many reasons. It puts the spotlight on local historic preservation. But the other thing that it does is it allows certified communities to apply for grants. And only certified local governments can apply for these grants. And there's only thirty-some, maybe forty tops in the state that are certified local governments. So it allows us access to this pool. And the reason that this is important is, the way preservation works locally is there is a, you all know that we have a local historic district, but the guiding document for that local historic district is a study committee report. And that study committee report was created in nineteen seventy-eight. And so, and it hasn't been updated since. And the way we update it is to do a survey, we resurvey it, and then we put that updated data into that. And then we update the study committee report. So it's going to be a two-part process. So I'm here tonight to ask you to support the grant that would allow us to do the resurvey. And then once that resurvey work is done, let's say twenty twenty-five, then I would come back to you and I would say, now I'm asking if you could please appoint a study committee so that we could update that study committee report. And then we would have a complete set of documents to go forward. Because as we all know, time marches on, and what is historically important is always changing. And so after, you know, the last time we surveyed was nineteen eighty-two. And so since then, we're looking at, okay, what other stories do we need to be telling? What other resources are important? What are some historic themes that we weren't looking at in nineteen eighty-two that now we need to look at? So that's, that's why it's important work, and it will then feed that study committee report later on down the road. And then we'll have a complete set of documents to guide us and guide the historic district commission in making their decisions for the next several decades. So that's, that's what it's about, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Simmons, you have a question?
Yes, so thank you, a couple of quick questions. One is for the resurvey, is, does the resurvey to think about what other places could be considered historic? Would it eliminate some places that might have been considered historic but may not be now because of changes? And then also, is it focused in areas that have already been designated? Is it looking at other spaces? So I've been trying to get a sense too of, for instance, when I've done different tours and things, like on the south side, thinking, oh, some of these places are really old, like, you know, but they're not designated and not understanding necessarily if it would be a benefit to them to be designated or not. But yeah, so would that also look at some of those different spaces too?
So right now, the plan would be, because this local historic district study committee report that we're working with since nineteen seventy-eight, it's our, it's the guiding document for the district, and it, it's missing some key things. And it's missing a list of contributing and non-contributing buildings as part of it. And that is affecting the commission's ability to make decisions. So the priority right now is to resurvey the existing historic district to, in order to get that study committee report updated, so the commission can make better decisions and better protect and preserve the resources that are in the district. But having said that, that is definitely a priority on the staff side to look at. And Scott, I don't know how many of you met Scott, but Scott was a preservation planner before I got the job. He had already started this process of identifying some of the resources in the south side. And, and so one of the things too about being a certified local government is they also have like a partnership program, where maybe they could help with some of, some of the other preservation priorities outside the existing local historic district. So that's definitely a priority of staff's is to look outside the existing district and also think about what are some of these other important resources that were overlooked and that have been overlooked? So I feel like that's a, I know earlier you guys were talking about, okay, this is an initiative that's council-wide, and then this other initiative over here is sort of in small groups. And I feel like this, if we could get this grant and have the consultant, the architectural historian, working on this year, then staff can be more freed up to help do some of the other work that you're talking about. And like I said, Scott started it, so looking at some of the other resources that are historic, that haven't been designated. And the other thing that would be part of this process is a community meeting to start the process and a community meeting to end the process, in that's the minimum. And so maybe part of it could also be engaging within neighborhoods that are outside the district and talking to them about, like you said, what are the benefits of designation? What would designation look like, those kinds of things? I think, I think that's something the staff definitely wants to do and will do, but I don't know that it would necessarily fall within this grant, because this grant has, the focus right now has to be on that study committee report and getting it updated, because it's, I don't want to call it inadequate, but it doesn't meet current standards, and so it's putting the commission at a disadvantage right now when they make their decisions.
And then the kinds of things that they'd be able to do, would it allow for improvements on like specific properties, like individual properties within the district? So like there's a place I have in mind, it's like on cross, it's a big white house. Since I've moved here, it's been like basically held up by boards.
Oh, I know the one, I know the one.
You know, it's like, it looks like, ooh, this was lovely in its heyday, but it's never, it's like gone through now like three different owners, I think, since I've lived here. Maybe four. So anyway, like would it, would it allow for grants for someplace like that, which apparently can't be torn down, but is just there?
There aren't, well, the local historic district does allow for demolitions. There's a process for it, and it does allow for demolitions. I'm not saying that particular property would be demolished, but, but the, there's not grants available to private property owners, but what I will say is the state just reopened, just, and this is something for all of you to know, for your residents, the state did just open the Michigan State Historic Tax Credit again for homeowners. The commercial one is still closed, but the homeowners' historic tax credit just reopened on Monday. So that has opened for twenty twenty-three, and I'm happy to give you more information. I'll include that in the CIL too, I forgot to do that. So there, that is some help that's available to homeowners. I don't know of any grants that are available to homeowners though, but that tax credit, I think, is going to prove valuable. And in order to take advantage of it, it is contributing properties within the local historic district or contributing properties within the national registered district, so.
Mayor Protem?
Is that a question you spoke of contributing and non-contributing properties? Could you define those?
So, so when you do your survey work, you identify different historic themes and you put everything into a historic context. And so, once you've looked at the story of a place and you've figured out some key themes that you want to look at more closely, then you start to the work of tying various, tying some of the resources to that story. And if, if, let's say, for example, maybe a historic house burned down at some point, and then a nineteen fifty's ranch was built in its place. So you might have some houses from the eighteen eighties, some houses from the eighteen nineties, this house from nineteen fifty-two, and then some more eighteen eighties and eighteen nineties. And so what you would say is that most likely, that, let's say, a little ranch house in there, that's probably not going to be a contributing. So you would consider that a non-contributing, because it doesn't really help tell the story of the district. And then the other houses are contributing. So the key thing is the way the commission, if a building is non-contributing, then the commission looks at it in one way, because they're not really trying to save historic material on it. But if the house is contributing, then they're trying to save as much historic material as they can, if that makes sense. And so they look, it affects the way they review projects. And so having that information and having that information up to date is going to be really important for the commission and for all the property owners in the district.
Additional questions from council? All right, seeing none, clerk, please call the rule. Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
Mayor Brown? Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tousen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jay Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, and thanks for hanging out with us for so long to do this, thank you so much. Councilmember Sweet, do you have our next resolution?
Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero nine, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, that the minutes of January tenth and seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three city council meeting be approved, and I so move.
Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, clerk Kalanga, please.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tousen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jay Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Councilmember Tousen, you have our next resolution.
I do, resolution number twenty twenty-three dash zero one zero. Resolution to approve an extension of the twenty-five thousand dollar grant agreement with Washtenaw County Prosecuting Attorney. It is resolved by the city, by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, that an extension for the grant agreement with the Washtenaw County Prosecuting Attorney for twenty-five thousand for the support of the expansion program is hereby approved, and the mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign for and on behalf of the city, subject to the approval of the city attorney, and I so move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, discussion. I know, it's a, yeah, it's a carryover, but I didn't know if anybody had questions or anything.
How much did they, have they not used?
Oh, sorry, Evan. Not bad, it was like, I was looking for questions and, you don't have the number? It was for, what, twenty-five thousand, but we didn't use it all?
This came to my office, the contact with the sheriff's department, or with the prosecuting attorney's office, said that they were working on this, they had a lot more work to do, and they wanted to extend it for another year to complete the project. I don't have a specific amount in hand, I'm sorry.
But city manager, you said that you don't feel like a lot of this was used? There's nothing new, it's just a carryover from what was already allocated. Thank you. Additional questions, comments?
Was there any statement from the prosecutor's office about the effect of the language that we put in there to make this only useful, the money that they got from us only for residents of the city of Ypsilanti?
Negative, they had no objection to that.
Anything further? Seeing none, clerk Kalanga?
Councilmember Tousen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jay Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Councilmember Jay Simmons, you have our next resolution.
Resolution number two zero two three dash zero one one, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the council, the city council has evaluated both the city manager and city clerk for their performance, and whereas both employees were rated highly in their performance reviews, and whereas both employees' salary will increase by three percent now, therefore be it resolved that the city council approve the above salary increases effective retroactively to the date of the employee evaluations, and I so move.
It's been moved and supported, discussion or question?
I have a question.
Mayor Protem?
I was under the impression that, I guess I misunderstood this as, with some of the emails that have been going back and forth, that this was a cost of living increase and that it wasn't attached to the evaluation. There is information about cost of living in one of the emails that came out, it was, it was all about the cost of living and not about performance reviews. And this resolution is, is all about performance and not cost of living. And I think those are two separate things, and in terms of the performance, I think there's a conversation that needs to be had about that. So I was, came here tonight willing to give a three percent cost of living increase, but not for performance. And if this is performance, then I think the city manager and the city clerk should be separated in that sense.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yeah, Steve, so I believe Mr. Barr drafted this resolution for us, so we can change the, you know, wording or whatever. If you want to, you know, be more specific, I'm happy to do that, instead of accepting it as, you know, presented, I guess.
You just moved to divide the question.
Well, I think it's also the principle of what it's related to, right, Steve? Is that if I understand?
Right.
Cost of living? So we could, I'd be willing to amend that.
Well, we did, I thought that we did get an email, so Frances, right? You sent an email saying that the cost of living increases have happened. And so that this is specifically for performance base, but also in your email, I thought you were trying to clarify also the process between union, non-union employees, and also the ways that the, the performance base isn't necessarily tied to the increase, perhaps? Okay, I just want to make sure I'm up to date. So I would say that if there's going to be an amendment to this based on what you just put forward, that it, that it wouldn't be necessarily on, it wouldn't be about the cost of living, it would be about splitting it, if that would be what you would.
So I think that some of the confusion for those who participated in the performance reviews was that we were unsure if the two staff that we oversee got a cost of living already as well. So I think there's confusion there. So you did get a cost of living increase when everyone else got theirs. So I think that wasn't clear prior to this moment.
I would agree with that, actually.
Yeah, if I could explain, I tried to pattern, to pattern non-union with union. So when it came to cost of living, that's something that they do across the board. And they receive their raise at their step, which is kind of like their anniversary. Historically, non-union did not receive any raises until after all the union. And so it would be after the union agreements are settled. I don't think it would be right for us to give non-union raises before the contracts are settled, you know? Because they kind of set the standard for what Because they kind of set the standard for what goes forward. It's like they'll say, oh, you gave, you gave you guys 5%, you know, you gave the union, you know, 3% or whatever. So we kind of let those take their course. And so historically, non-union have been the last group of people to receive a raise. And in the past, sometimes non-union didn't get anything. So that was the reason why it was emphasized that council would set aside a certain amount, you know, to make sure that non-union would get something, and then to, the reason for the survey was to try to set some steps in order. But as you remember, when we went through the survey, the, the amounts were just, you know, something that we would not be able to do if we went with those steps, because they were comparing us to other, you know, other municipalities with certain, with positions similar to ours.
So let me ask a question, because I want to make sure I understand.
Yeah.
So let's take all the rest of the staff out of this. I want to understand, so we had voted, I can't remember what time, maybe it was last spring?
It was budget, yeah.
Last budget season to, for you and Andrew about to have an increase. Okay, so there was that, right? So I want to understand.
No, last spring?
I mean, no.
Whatever, maybe.
We never voted for an increase for Andrew and I.
I think the, the last, the last evaluation period is what she's talking about.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what, sorry, that's, right. So since, since then, because I want to understand, because I'm not sure I'm tracking this latest thing with, you know, so staff had gotten, and I totally kind of appreciate, let's give it to bargain for first, and then we'll, you know, handle it with non-bargain for staff. So since we had that last vote that we, we voted on, have you and Andrew received an increase?
We got the cost of living adjustment.
Okay, and so I guess I'm confused by that, that, I guess, did we, was that supposed to be part of that? So I'm not used to someone giving themselves a raise, that's, I guess.
No, so basically, I didn't give myself a raise. When council of the living adjustments go forth, they just go across to all the employees.
Okay.
This, you know, this was, this is different.
Yeah, I think, I think there's some confusion around, council has to decide on giving you a performance raise, but we didn't have to have a say in giving the cost of living for the two, that's what I was saying, the two employees who work for council.
Yeah, that's what I'm struggling with, because.
Cost of living adjustment is, it's, it's all in the budget or all not the end.
Okay, all right, thanks for clarifying that, because I guess I wasn't doing.
Was that what you're looking for?
No, we're trying to understand.
Yeah, just, just what comes to us and what doesn't. Because I mean, I didn't even, I was thinking that this was cost of living, because we are the ones who are supposed to make, like, the decision for you as the city manager makes the decision for all of your staff. So I think there is some confusion about, yeah, like how that, how that works.
Managers don't make a decision for any of their employees.
All right, I don't mean like making the decision, I mean for raises and like, you know, just increases in, in pay. Yeah. Okay.
Then I'm, I'm really confused as to some of the, the information in the emails in terms of staff not getting their raises until this came up to council. And I don't understand how those two things are, are connected.
They're not. Actually, they're not. And if you read the email, I was trying to emphasize, because I wasn't given direction on how to implement the merit-based. So I just was going to do them all at once. Now, if we would have done everything on time and council interviews, I mean, council evaluations were in on time, we all would have been around the same time. I could have just went ahead and did staffs right after the evaluation. And that's what I said. I said in my email, I said, well, I said hindsight is 2020, maybe the perception of council was that I would issue the performance raises right after the evaluations. However, I chose, since they're all in, I, since they're all in one bunch, the 50K was set aside, I thought I would do them all at the same time. There's nothing that says in the process, you have to do it right after. And so with union, they get theirs on their anniversary. So if council wants to establish or direct me, I should say, but I feel like that's my function, but if council wants to direct me and say, do, you know, do the raise right after the performance evaluation, I think I understand that now, that that is what council was expecting. But I was going on historical, which was non-union didn't really get theirs until after union things were settled, we were like the last people. So all of them weren't settled, so I was waiting. I don't know if that, does it make sense to you, but?
I, I think I'm.
So can we make sure that, like, so we don't all just jump in? So, so we're serious, okay, go ahead.
I apologize.
No, you're fine.
Okay, so I'm sorry, because I, I thought the email was a little confusing too, and it was, now, now it's making a little more sense to me, because I wasn't realizing that any type of cost of living increase was also going to be applicable to, you know, both of you or whatever. So, so the cost of living increases, those happened, when did those happen then for everybody?
Maybe July.
Okay, so July 1st, okay, got it, got it. And then the average was 3%?
Mm-hmm.
Or was 3%?
Yep.
Across the board? Okay. Okay, and so, and then when were evaluations then done for essentially staff?
April? Yeah, I'm seeing, it was around.
So April of 2022?
Mm-hmm. I did my evaluations.
Okay.
Does anybody remember? Was it around April? Yeah, okay, yeah.
And so those folks haven't gotten any type of performance increase?
No.
Okay.
Because that's when you had mine too, but you guys kept delaying it. I had Andrew's and I.
Well, we started the process and then we had it in the fall, okay.
Right.
Okay, and then? So you make the decisions based on your staff, correct, for performance evaluations? Right? And Andrew, you make, you, do you have any, do you have, is there anyone that you, you're waiting to give a raise to, I would like to understand? For performance?
One of my employees just started a couple of weeks ago, and then another one, I just received one.
And one just received one because he got expanded duties and he was kind of moved up, so.
He started as deputy not too long ago, but he was in the treasury department previously. So he became deputy clerk.
Okay, so essentially.
That was last week.
It's kind of, it wasn't really a performance, it was more of a reclassification.
Reclassification of job, yeah.
Okay, but otherwise, you were waiting as well? Or it wasn't appropriate for your staff at the given time?
My staffs are, they're new to the position.
Right, so then it wasn't, okay. So it was a moot point for your staff? That's what I'm trying to just understand. I want to make sure to include you in the conversation too.
But one of my staff members, he had expanded roles since he was assisting treasury, Reagan and I spoke about it, and then we.
And then I approved his.
City manager approved it.
Okay.
It was essentially about 7%.
For his new duties?
He has a new job.
Yeah.
He has expanded roles.
Expanded roles, right, yep.
So that's why I was so adamant about perception or how it looks, because I believe that council was expecting me to do the performance raise right after the performance evaluation. At that point, I don't even think I was prepared, you know, because I'd have to, I see what the pot we're working with, but I don't know what I'm going to get from everyone, you know, I don't know what their evaluation is going to be, I'm going to have to figure it out. But that's my job. But hindsight is 2020, but that was never, that wasn't anything that was ever spelled out, you know, that I had to do it right after that. So I followed paths, doing them all at the same time, which would have occurred, I think if we all would have gotten our evaluations in on time, then I would have probably knew how to proceed.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
So the, a question I have, I have some questions about the evaluations, but outside of that, is, the way I understood it from before is that there was a budget allocation to be used for raises? That includes the cost of living increases, or is that from a separate pot of money?
Separate.
Okay, so there's a pot of money that was already allocated to be used for performance based increases that we have not expended yet. And so what's in front of us now is a part of that, but then for the rest of the staff, would that follow after this process? Were you waiting for this process to be able to process the rest of the staff's performance based increases as well? And then would that be then, just in terms of for expectations, that that would be what we would go through in general? That we would have something come in front of us that would then kick off for all staff a process?
Right.
Or how could we think about the timing? Because this is also retroactive, so then this would be retroactive back to the start of the fiscal year in July?
No, July was the cost of living. This would be, well, ours wouldn't really be retroactive because the, the evaluation was done late. And ideally, I scheduled the evaluations all around the same time that council would have dealt with Andrew and myself. So everything would have been occurring at the same time.
Which would have been in April.
Right.
So what, I have so many, so many thoughts at once. So after this is resolved for the city manager and the city clerk, then, like Desai was just asking, that would then trigger the, ideally, the raises for staff, and theirs would be retroactive to April?
When they had their evaluation.
I don't think that, that necessarily follows in the stated resolution. It's not, it's not at all addressed in this resolution. There's no language about the, the other staff. And to say that this triggers anything, it doesn't trigger anything except for raises for two people.
Mr. Barr prepared it, and so if you like that language in there, you could amend it and put it in there, but that is what I'm going to do, I'm not going to hold out on them. But that's up to you, up to council. And as I said, if council wants to, to direct how, how and when they are given, that's fine. But I, I thought that that was my job, to do that, and I kind of felt a little funny about that, but. And seeing that this is the first time, so there was just a perception that it had been done, there's, I think there was a lot of missing pieces, because people didn't understand how raises had been given, especially as it pertains to union and the model that I was following, so.
I will move to, what did you call it, split the question? Divide the question, thank you, sorry.
Is there support for that?
What does, what does that mean?
You'd vote on the city manager and the city clerk separately.
Okay, thank you.
Was there support?
There's support, yeah.
So movement supported, Councilmember Simmons?
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Go ahead. No, I'm just wondering, what about the language, overall language? I'm wondering if there's any amendments we want to make. But I guess once we split it, then we can.
Once you divide the question, it just handles separately.
Okay, okay, thank you for clarification. Okay, that's all I wanted.
Oh, oh, okay, okay. Discussion on dividing the question, are we allowed to discuss that? I know there's some things we're not allowed to. Oh, we can? Okay. So discussion on dividing the question? Okay, thank you.
I mean, that's fine with me.
I'm just, I mean, there's folks who have never, you know, we've.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I want to make sure, okay. All right. Okay, so Clerk Kalanga, please call the roll on dividing the question.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Jay Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tousen?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, Mr. Barr, Andrew, can you direct us, so we just?
Yeah, so then you would look at the same resolution that started with, say, the city manager.
Okay, so we're starting with the city manager, do we have to restate the resolution?
Okay. Well, I think we can start with the city clerk if we wanted to, correct?
He can say, yeah, he can say whoever you want. Yeah.
I would start with the city clerk.
But we need to restate the resolution, please, with the name. No, you're fine, you're fine. So can somebody restate the resolution?
I don't have it anymore, though.
Oh, we gave it away.
Oh, sorry, it may have it electronically, but.
Give it away.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so the original, well, our split resolution now is resolution number 2023-011A?
Yeah, just read it.
All right, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the city council has evaluated the, I'll just, you said Steve, city clerk, you wanted to go with?
Sure.
City clerk for their, for their performance, and whereas his, these, this employees was rated highly in their performance reviews, and whereas the salaries, this employee's salary will increase by 3%, now therefore be it resolved that the city council, the above salary increase, effective retroactively to the date of employee evaluations. Oh, I so moved, sorry.
Okay, so moved and seconded. All right, so discussion on the resolution on the floor, which is the city clerk.
Councilmember Simmons?
I think one thing that might be easy to resolve too, or, well, that we want to, you know, when we're talking about retroactive, is that the date that we accepted the evaluations or the date that we held, you know, the conference, which I'm just throwing that out there for the folks to consider.
The resolution said date of evaluation.
Right, which is the date we had the meetings with the, yes, that's, which is fine, so I just want to have clarity on that.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Does that date need, oh, sorry, go ahead. Does that date need to be then written in there so it's, like, clear? Or does it need to be added?
I can write it, I mean. Wasn't that the date that it was accepted at the council meeting?
Well, the, the evaluations were, evaluations were accepted at the last regular meeting.
Oh, right, all right, okay, so the actual meeting, this is.
Closed session that we had.
Would this be another instance where new council members would abstain because we weren't?
Yeah, this is the same, it's the same one. You could, you could.
Okay.
You could choose to do that. You don't have to, but you could choose to do that if that's what you wanted to do.
Councilmember Simmons?
So I have, I have another question, because I did, I think I ultimately know that we're talking about this, I found some of the information a little confusing, I just, again, want to wrap my head around some of the information. So there was an email on January 6th from you city manager, because I was asking about the money that we had set aside. So we had approved $50,000 for performance raises to promote retention, it was one of our goals, right? And so looking at some of the numbers that were provided, so there was a number of department heads, there are nine department heads, and so essentially, so I think you have nine department heads then, and Andrew, you essentially don't have any department heads? So you have none, right? You have zero, okay, so I'm just trying to, okay. So there was, and here it says performance raise, and I think that's why I was confused, but really, what, what that 3% performance raise is, is a cost of living increase?
No, it's just the same number, 3%. The cost of living was a 3%, and I was just giving you numbers for a 3% performance. I mean, it could be three, two and a half, two, you know, but you wanted, I thought that you wanted some kind of idea of what it would look like. I just chose a number, I chose.
Okay, understand, I'm trying to, that's why I'm trying to wrap my head around, this is a.
It's not the same.
This is a example, like a for example.
Example.
Okay, okay, thank you. And so, but the $50,000 pot that we had, was that where the, was the cost of living also coming out of that then?
No.
That was separate pot, right? So I'm just trying to, okay, all right, understand, okay. Okay, that is helpful for me.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Another question I have is, so based on what you, what was just discussed in terms of the percentages, would that mean that council could decide to change those percentages in different ways? And then the other question I have is, is trying to think about how this would impact then other staff being able to receive increases too, like? Like what that process would be for determining that? Or if it will all just be based on a set percentage?
No, it wouldn't be based on a set percentage. It would be based on their evaluation.
So then it would be like if you're evaluated, let's, you know, so the evaluations are like like one to five, right? So let's say it's like, okay, you're at like three, you're at satisfactory. So that would be a performance raise of 1% to 2%. If you're at four, you're going to get a performance raise of, you know, 3% to 4%. If you're at five, if you get a five, you know, like.
Yes.
Is that kind of how?
Absolutely, within the budget.
Think about the steps, yeah.
Yes, within the budget limit.
And so then, yeah, so then within the budget, it would be trying to determine. I mean, yeah, it's a, it would be probably a lot of little spreadsheet work, right? Because it's like who, like determining where folks are and then what those percentages are until you hit the $50,000
Yep.
limit.
You got it right.
Right?
So I just use 3% across the board as an example. And so everyone won't hit three, you know?
So is three, is three the ceiling? Or is three just a number arbitrarily that was?
That was just an arbitrary number.
Okay, this is more confusing to me. But I I actually understand what Desiree just pointed out better now because I did, okay. I, I don't know. Mayor Proton Wilcoxen?
If the example is 3% and there's departments of different sizes and different budgets, what measures were taken to to harmonize those across departments? So somebody, and and this happened in a corporation I was I was part of, certain departments were were known for giving great evaluations. And so when it came to that, everybody in that department got a five. And whereas other other managers were much more discerning about how they they gave those evaluations. And so that was more evenly spread through that that department. And so you've got some people in some departments getting fives because, you know, they have a and maybe they all deserve fives, but who knows? But then somebody, another manager is evaluating with a different criteria and making more of a spread. And some of the things that have influenced those things is that, you know, the average for the department has to be a certain thing. And so if somebody gets high, somebody gets low. And that is a problematic model to manage. But right now, we don't know what that is. You know, it's like, how do you harmonize across across departments and and the different values that have gone in from the managers for those people? So if you're just going by numbers and it's one through five and, you know, there's no consideration for how those things are weighted? And how do you, how do you make that?
That's the difficulty with performance raises. There's going to be differences of opinion. I do solicit the the guidance of HR. So exactly, exactly what Desiree was saying, I was going to go by scoring and looking at the whole pot of money. So that was going to be the model. It would have been great to just be able to use that step survey, but we don't have enough money for that. So if if council wants to dictate or I don't want to say dictate, that's not a good word. But if council wants to even direct me in how to apply this, I'm even open to that. I'm not try, I think that that's, I would like city council to trust me in distributing the performance evaluation. But it seems like there's a question in that as well, so. If you want to oversee that as well.
I don't, I don't think council wants to oversee that. I think there's, I think there was some confusion and I can speak for just for myself. I thought that some of those things were already figured out and were just being waited on to be implemented. Not that they haven't even been determined. So I think every time we have this conversation, I learn something new. And it makes it more confusing moving forward because the idea is not to micromanage the process, but also like just wanting clarity and transparency in the process. So I think this, it's, it's been like almost a year and there's so many things that I feel like I'm learning like today or we learned last week that are not what most who are here expected. So I'm, I'm just feeling a little frustrated if I'm being honest because there were some of us who were here who, we all had a shared understanding. But then there was some disconnect with like with our, with the city, with you, with the city manager. And so I just want to make sure that going forward, we just have a shared understanding about what the process is, not to micromanage how you implement it.
I can appreciate that because the way that I did it was how it had been done historically. And that's what I was doing. So there was no process that was laid out to do it. I understand that the expectation or this perception of council was that that they would happen right after the evaluation. That wasn't communicated to me. I thought I had liberty to follow the pattern or whatever pattern. So I don't, you know, I don't really know what to say about that because there was no there was nothing given in relationship to that. As I said, the unions get theirs when they have their anniversary. I, I would, I wasn't going to do it that way. I was just going to do it all at one time. But my expectation was that everything would have been done, you know, like in April, and I would have just done everybody. So.
So I think, I think I'm going to call the question on what's we have sitting on the floor, I guess, unless someone really has a lot more to say. I mean, I think all around, right, we've got to get better with this on on all of our ends, like, you know, and be more consistent. I mean, we we haven't had a kind of a, we've been trying to, you know, get better with how we do the evaluations on our end for what we're responsible for and being timely, you know? And so we haven't necessarily had kind of a a due date, but, you know, we definitely belabored last year's process.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and so, but, you know, I also thought that the the staff would have been handled too by now. But but that being said.
But staff was handled and I did communicate with staff. Staff received the cost of living adjustment. And I did communicate with staff, you know, that we're waiting for the entire process. As I said, hindsight is 2020. I did not know that the expectation was that I delivered it right after their evaluation. So and I've communicated with them and they seem to have understood because all of us that were here know that non-union was always last. We can change that, we want to change that. We want to do it better, I want to do it better. But non-union kind of like waited till the dust settled. And sometimes the city manager came to us and said, there's nothing for you. And so everyone else got something and we never got nothing.
Well, we we set it aside this time for that.
And so they're going to, and they're going to get it no matter what happens. If I don't get a raise, that's okay. I've learned a whole lot that council's expectation is that as soon as their performance evaluation is done, that they, you know, get their raise no matter what. No matter what non-union, so.
Yeah, I mean, so just to acknowledge, acknowledge again that I think, right, we have to do, I think, just better all the way around.
We did terrible with the Ari vows, I mean, it took forever.
But I did call the question.
Well, we have to vote on calling the question.
There's no second on that.
I'll second that.
You need a support.
Yeah, you got a support.
Do you actually just want to vote or do you?
Yeah, do we need to call the question or can we just move to vote?
Oh, I guess we can move to vote.
Did we get a second on that?
It was a second. If you want to, just want to call the resolution, we can just call the resolution.
Oh. Is there anybody opposed to moving forward with just calling the resolution that's on the table?
Otherwise, we have to vote to vote.
Yeah.
What is the, what is the motion now?
To call the question.
I called the question.
For the the original motion?
For the city clerk's raise.
Can we present for the clerk?
Yes. I'm good with just the voting on the resolution. Is everyone else okay with that? Yeah, otherwise you're going to vote.
The one that she read.
Vote to vote on the, yeah. So it's just going to be an extra vote? Do you want an extra vote or not an extra vote?
Can we just, please, call the role on the resolution?
Okay.
Councilmember Jay Simmons?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Abstain.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Abstain.
Five yes and two abstentions, the motion carries.
All right, I'll read the next one.
Yeah, can you read the next one?
Yeah, so now the next one from the split question here is resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. Whereas the city council has evaluated both the, I'm sorry, where the, whereas the city council has evaluated the city manager for their performance and whereas this employee was rated highly in their performance reviews. And whereas the salaries, this employee's salary will increase by 3%. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council approved the above salary increase effective retroactive to the date of employee evaluation. I so move.
It was then supported, all right, discussion.
I have a question for Mr. Barr. Mr. Barr? Oh, it's fine that we just, we just essentially, we've signed it once, I wrote a question. Sorry, just logistical, okay.
All right.
Okay. I don't have any more discussion.
Is that a hand, Mayor Proton?
Oh, it's actually two, but.
Oh, Mayor Proton?
Previous statements about about what council's expectations are for the way that this, where staff merit-based pay increases is is problematic for me in that my actual expectation was that when we discussed this last year and there was a going back two years ago, there was a, there was a a resolution that stated that the city manager should implement a study for for salaries throughout Southeast Michigan and compare that, do the study and and implement a program to make Ypsilanti staff salaries commensurate with with their peers throughout the area. That initial study was commissioned and had not even been finished. And a vote came up in council as to whether the city manager would get a pay increase. And the letter of the resolution was that that when that study was put into place that that then you would get a raise. The intention of having conversations with people in council, the intention was not that that was the requisite for the raise, but that you would be in with everybody else with the results of that study. But you received a raise before anybody else. And so that went through and I didn't really understand it. I think I voted against it. And so it wasn't the intent that just because you commissioned a study that you would get a pay raise. It was your pay raise would be tied with everybody else's evaluations and go through that. So now we're we're coming up to the point where there's a second, second evaluation for you. And the question of a second raise when all of the rest of staff have only been participating in one raise. And so you got a raise before everybody else because there wasn't an evaluation process in place. So if there was a raise, I don't even know about that.
I didn't get a raise, I guess I'm.
No, Anthony Morgan put forth this resolution and we all voted on it. So you got a raise when that, when that study was commissioned. And I thought it was very strange that 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 letter, it was a poorly worded resolution because it conformed to what was stated in the resolution. But it didn't conform to the intent that I think everybody on council had at the time. And so I find that problematic. And so to say that, you know, all of staff's pay raises will be because of the expectations that you are now listening to here is misguided. And what what the expectation was is that there would be a plan that would account for the things that that I brought up and that the council person Simmons had brought up would have been put into a plan back then and been reported to council on how this was going to go. How how would these be weighted? How would you make sure that the departments, you know, where was the historical underpayment across departments? And we, I haven't seen any of that. So that was my expectation. My expectation wasn't about the timing of the pay. It was about, it was about the timing of a plan to execute this so that it was equitable. And to date, I haven't seen it. And neither has anybody else. So to to say that this is going to be guided by the expectations of this conversation, it it should be guided by a policy that is put into place that accounts for all of those things. Now, we have a new HR director and I don't know what his role in this is, but I think that is something certainly that he should be involved in. And this shouldn't be something just of your own making, but this should be, should be vetted through through MML and various other places. So I I have issue with the fact that this has sat for so long. And and yes, the council was delinquent in getting the evaluations through. But the evaluations for staff were already done and we had already allocated that money. And so it seems that there was no plan put into place to to govern how that was going to be allocated. And that's the problem I have. And we still don't have that. So voting on this and and saying, you know, and and the statement that this will trigger for everybody else. Well, there's no, there's no plan in place for that. So I think that would require another resolution. And I don't want to micromanage this, but I do want to see what it looks like before I I vote on those things.
So I I can prepare the plan, but I was never told that. You know, that I needed to bring a plan to council for approval. So this is like new to me. The other thing is that a couple of years ago, I think council was following how it was typically done. And that's what I was trying to remind council of, is that typically when council did our evaluations, the closure of it was if there'd be a raise or not. And that is what council member Morgan, you know, and the council followed. And so that's why that occurred. And that wasn't before everyone, that's just how it's been, that's how it's been done. Had Mr. Barr to look it up. So that's why I was saying we need to bring closure because that's kind of how the process had been. And so that's why it was done like that two years ago, or whatever you're you're saying. And you were saying that I got one before them, but that's how the process had been. Once you evaluate, you would say pay raise or no, and it brought closure to that process. So that's why that happened. And you said before anybody else got anything, well, there wasn't a performance-based evaluation back then. So when you're saying they didn't get anything, because we didn't have anything.
All right, that was my point. The for for council, the intent of that resolution to to move that forward and get the study done was so that everybody was treated in the same program and and.
Well, see, I don't know that because that was not verbalized, that that was council's intent. I thought that council was just following regular policy. I mean, Mr. Barr can also say that this is the way they went. They they were done together. But if that is the case, then I'm following it now because I'm doing them all together. So I'm I'm a little confused. I'm doing them all together now.
Right, but you've already received a raise when none of the rest of staff received.
I have not, I have not.
We voted on that before, when Anthony Morgan was on council.
No, I'm saying, okay, I'm saying then, back then, before we instituted performance evaluations, that was the process. The process was that council evaluated the clerk and the manager and they brought closure to it by doing the raise. Am I right, Andrew?
I understand that.
All right.
But the expectation.
Can I jump in? So I think what I, I was also here. We had a split process for the raises during that time when Anthony brought an additional 2%. Is that what you're talking about, Steve? When it equaled out to the 5% raise? The 2% came after we had had the discussion about implementing performance evaluations for all staff. And the intent was that additional 2% would be given when that was completed and implemented with all staff as well. So the original 3% was given at the close of the evaluation. And then we gave an additional 2% when that study was completed. And with the intent that there would also be performance evaluations for everyone else, so they would also receive performance raises. Am I, am I wrong?
Well, we didn't have any money back then. We had not even allocated money for performance.
Right, and we all, but we, but we gave the 2% without having money back then for that either. Right, and we all, but we gave the 2% without having money back then for that either. So it was, so, I mean...
Yeah, I'm confused because this is our first time having performance evaluations. And so I am following through on what was allocated in that plan. It just seems like the way or the expectation of how to do that was not the same. We didn't...
We gave that extra 2% with the intention that we were starting with you, and then you were going to do performance evaluations, and it didn't happen. And so that, because we didn't have one, and now we do have one for this next evaluation period, but we expected that it would be done then. But again, we're in a whole different, we're in a whole different budget here, and we are going back. So can we focus on the topic at hand now?
Yeah, but I just kind of got to clarify that 2%, I was given, you said for the expectation, I was going to give them something that wasn't there. We didn't budget at that time. We just budgeted for performance evaluations.
It wasn't even based on what...
It wasn't based on that.
Staff were getting, it was based on you creating a plan to do it. So you would get that 2% when the plan was complete, but what happened was you got the 2% when the study was commissioned. And so we're still sitting here today and we don't have a plan. So you've already received a 2% raise on the, our expectation that there would be a plan in place. And so now it's another year later and we still don't have a plan because...
So you want in writing how I'm going to distribute?
No, no, can I... Councilmember Simmons, sorry. I think, I think that, I mean, I think that we're all maybe on the same page. I mean, I guess I'm actually disappointed that staff are still waiting to get their rate, their increases. Like, I understand, you know, because I think our process with you two is separate from their process. And so I don't need to see, you know, and I don't want to micromanage kind of the who's getting what, but just that it would be get done, that, you know, if theirs was done in April, that at some point, you know, by the summer, whatever, because we had the money set aside. So the fact that, I feel like, right, it was, we were waiting for this to happen, then to trigger that. And I understand there's kind of this, you know, it's like, well, then you don't know how much is in the pot, but there's this, and I mean, but, you know, I think we had a decent chunk of money set aside. So it feels like this was left undone. We keep talking about, you know, the importance, right, of staff retention and valuing them. And so, you know, to me, like, you know, I'm trying, you know, with all due respect, I mean, I think like we all, and I'm talking about everybody who's sitting up in this section here, you know, you, Andrew, us, right? We have an obligation to the staff, right, to, you know, make sure that they are treated, you know, fairly and well, I mean, because, you know, we're asking them to do a lot with not a whole lot. So I know, I guess I'm just disappointed that that has been lingering out there. Again, it's not because we want to see a plan, I just thought that that seemed kind of obvious, that their stuff should get done, we set a chunk aside, and we would manage ours. So I know that to me is one thing, but...
So I can only state again that I was just following past practice on how they were distributed. And so non-union is kind of, not that I want that to continue, but non-union was kind of used to, you know, being last or being not at all. So I thought by the mere fact that we are considering performance raises was a great step forward, you know, and they're all looking forward to it. I consistently communicate with my staff. I reward them in ways other than salary. You know, there are other incentives.
Yeah.
So I was used to it because I knew sometimes non-union was just skipped over, but they had the assurance that they would not be because money was there for them, just waiting to complete the process. Now, maybe I should change the process, you know, because from what I'm hearing and the feedback, just do it then. I just waited because that's kind of how it had been done, and that's the only thing I can say, and I apologize for that, but I did not know what your expectation was. And I'm just a phone call away, you know?
So Councilmember Jay Simmons had two more points, and then I'll get to Councilmember Dee Simmons.
But it's okay.
No, so I think, I think, I think first of all, going forward, right, I mean, as I acknowledged with the previous resolution, that we're learning lessons, we're trying, we're all trying to get better at this, because, you know, we also can get better at how we handle this for the two of you. And so I want to acknowledge that. There's a point, and I understand that whole, the, you know, right, we got to take care of this group first than that group. And, you know, I think, you know, that I don't know that that's maybe the way we can operate continuing to go forward is kind of not also focusing or prioritizing our non-bargain four people, but it's tough, right? I know.
Because their contract.
Right.
You know, we're obligated by contract.
Oh, no, no, of course, right. So there's that piece, but, I mean, we still need to make sure that we, you know, take care of it. I think the other thing too that I'm wondering about is splitting the cost of living, why, you know, we're splitting kind of the cola with the performance, because I think that also leads to confusion when we're talking about it, and like, I didn't get a raise, I didn't get a, you know, a performance, I don't know, I just, where I work, we do it all at once, and it's a little bit clearer too in understanding who's kind of getting what when, and I don't know, so maybe that's something to think about going forward. I think by...
I followed the pattern.
Oh, no, I'm just talking about going forward, looking forward. You know, is that something that makes sense for us to do when we're doing these and then also with staff? And then I had one more point, and it was really gonna...
It was good, it was good.
And now I don't know.
Do you want me to go to Councilmember Desiree Simmons and come back to you?
I guess, yeah.
Councilmember Desiree.
Maybe it'll help jog something. Well, I just wanted to say too, because as we're thinking about what it is that we do want, what we want moving forward and ask, like, I actually am interested, I'm not interested in necessarily having to see the list of like, this person got this amount, but I am interested in understanding the process, like, if it is like the way, okay, like, based on performance measurements, like, folks within, you know, if we think about everyone who, you know, at like a base performance of satisfactory, whatever, gets cost of living. And then additional raise to that is based on performance in these ranges, like what that might look like, so that we have an idea of what, you know, what those percentage jumps might be, because I think that when it comes to allocating budget, that that kind of thing will be important, right? You know, if we have all of our staff at like outstanding, you know, whatever, like, we need to be prepared to compensate all of our staff at that level, and so we need to understand what that means and what that looks like. So I'm interested in knowing and seeing what that looks like in terms of what those steps might be. And then also to be clear, like, as we're saying now too, in terms of the timeline, so if we know evaluations are going to be happening, you know, April, May, that then we can expect that, you know, increases would happen, you know, with the start of the next fiscal year or whatever that would be, you know, so that that could be more clear. So I would, I would be interested in having that kind of level of policy clear so that we don't, you know, so that we don't have this again, but then also so we can better understand, you know, what that budget looks like too, because it's like, we go through this one year and you come back and say, you know, hey, $50,000 didn't really reach everyone, or hey, that was to fit, you know, whatever. Like, I feel like we don't really have something that would help us determine those kind of answers, so that would be something that I'd be interested in seeing that would help me be able to better support this process moving forward.
Right, I agree with that.
You remember yours?
Yeah, I did, yeah. And I want to say, yeah, that's the only level of detail. I just want to know, what's the philosophy of like, how we're approaching that this year? There is a lot of different ways to do the stuff, you know, where, hey, here's a pot of money, and, you know, we're gonna, you know, right, give a base, you know, kind of cola increase, and then with X percent, you know, that's going to be, you know, X percent, and then with the rest of it, we want to award, you know, and this department gets this because it's based on how many people you have, and, you know, give bonuses or one times or add to the base X amount or whatever, you know, and maybe it's going to be a percent or, you know, it's like, hey, everyone's a high performer, so I'm just going to split it equally amongst, whatever, I'm just saying, there's all kinds of ways to do that. And so that's right, I think what needs to be thought of going forward, and that's right, I don't want to see the nitty-gritty, but just that stuff is helpful to understand. Maybe in the future too, we need to split out, you know, a chunk in the budget for city manager, city clerk, you know, that we have to kind of work with, and then your staff, and then it doesn't feel like lumped together. I don't know, something to consider at budget time. I think the other thing too is though, I do, I was, have been wondering, like, where is our HR director, like, tonight?
Yeah, he had a death in the family.
Oh, okay, sorry, okay.
Yeah, he told me.
Okay, because, yeah, I think it's good to see him and have him part of these conversations. So I'm sorry to hear about his loss, so, but, you know, I think, right, it's obviously important for him too to work with this stuff. So, you know, I think we can agree to commit to do better, us, you know, like, as well, you know, of just being more consistent and having better plans, because I would like to, I would like to do better all around, right, for you and Andrew, but also I would like, you know, for our staff too, to be able to understand what to expect and whatnot, so.
Well, I do appreciate the feedback, I really do. So I will prepare something so that you can know how I plan to distribute. I know, but I didn't know that I needed to bring that to you. So I didn't know that, and that wasn't in a resol, you know, I didn't, so...
I think the only, yeah, the only thing I would add is that, yeah, I think, you know, we, as a council in general, and some folks weren't here, but we have, you know, the royal we need to do better to make sure that we do your evaluations in a timely fashion because I think that also, you know, just creates confusion, and it did this time. So it's up to us, and I'm committed to making sure that we do this, you know, I have to commit myself to making sure I get my stuff in on time because I have, you know, we have to all lead by example. And, yeah, I do think, you know, in terms of retention and just sheer just appreciation for the work that staff do, that we have to make sure that we're prioritizing, you know, giving them their just due and not belaboring that either. Like, you know, withholding like increase withholding funds is just not, it's a morale dump, like not a morale booster. So we have to think about that as well. Are there any further discussion or comments from council before we move to vote on the resolution that's on the table?
Just quickly, I wanted to say, I'm more than likely going to abstain because I was not here for the performance part, but just like you just said, going forward in the future, I want to make sure I'm understanding because tonight, I'm a little bit confused, especially because I'm reading here, it says, whereas both employees were rated highly in their performance reviews. And so I guess that's confusing to me if they were already rated and it says highly, and that's what the increase is for, the performance, and then I'm hearing all the other discussion. It does leave me a little bit confused.
I think there was some confusion, honestly, to respond back about what was coming forward tonight, because we didn't craft the resolution, Mr. Barr, what, based off of what would have happened right after an evaluation period? And I think, I think I said earlier in the conversation, some of us were unaware that like the cost of living was for everybody, for instance, so we didn't know if we were talking about cost of living or performance, you know? So again, clarity, making sure that we're all on the same page. If we did this in a timely fashion, that probably would have been clearer, you know, like, there's a lot that goes into it, and there's responsibility to be taken at the table, you know, as far as the royal we council is concerned, as far as this portion, but also just making communication with the city manager to know, you know, what the process was for staff too, we didn't, we didn't, nobody knew. We didn't really know, we were on different pages, basically, so I agree with you.
Any further comments?
Discussion. All right, go on, what'd she say, seven seconds of pause?
I don't know, I do have one more, let me just get it in real quick. Okay, so, the other part was, why wasn't it brought up before now? If it was something that, Steve, it sounds like you said, you guys were waiting on something that never came, why wasn't it brought up before? Was it a time period that Francis had to have something complete and it wasn't done? And if so, what is the time limit and how do we fix that in the future?
Right, so that I am aware, absolutely.
So we really don't have any rules. We've been trying to get, we've been trying to come up with, I think, all over, I mean, on both sides of the table, what are you going to say, with better, more consistent process for doing this? But as you, I mean, again, you're new, and so you'll see as we go through, you know, like, there is a lot of stuff, right?
But I feel like I'm being held accountable for no rules.
And that's what I was going to say, I don't, I don't agree with that statement of no rules.
No, no, no.
There were, there was a clear discussion about this, Councilmember King, I'm not, I'm not going to back, back on that. We had a conversation, there was shared expectation at the table, and somehow that didn't translate over. That is the problem, and so we need to be clearer then about that, and maybe formulate a rule, but I do not believe there was not...
Well, and I guess I was being...
A conversation.
Yeah, I just want to be clear, because I don't want to confuse the conversation, because I know exactly what we talked about.
Yeah, because I wasn't, but I wasn't clear on that. I want to make sure I say that because I would have provided that, and I would have loved for someone on council to say, give me this, you know?
I was talking actually about us though, us, us doing the evaluation.
Oh, but I was talking about...
Rules for us, yeah.
I was, oh, okay, but I was talking about the, like, how I was going to decide and all of that.
But we're not even talking about...
Oh, you're not, okay.
No, no, I'm talking about us and what we did, you know, what I'm saying is we make our own rules, right? And so we've been trying to get better with that, well, to a certain extent, I'm just saying about this process and more consistent. And so I'm happy to talk with you when we have coffee soon, you know, how we've tried the changes and continue to improve this.
Okay, again, and I think too, because what I said was, is why Ms. McMullin is commenting as well, I think, because again, Steve said, we were waiting on something that did not come, you know what I'm saying? And so what was the deadline for that? So I guess, even though I know you guys know what I'm saying and you are, Nicole already addressed it, but again, making sure that deadline is in place so every party knows what their responsibility is.
So my response was to that, it was not...
No, I know.
Well, yeah, it's not the same way.
Absolutely. I appreciate that.
Oh, that's it, I'm done.
Okay, all right, all right.
Roll call.
Yeah, I was going to say, if there's no more discussion, Clerk Colinga.
Councilmember King?
Abstain.
Mayor Proton Wilcoxen?
No.
Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Sweet?
Yes.
Councilmember Touson?
Abstain.
Councilmember Dee Simmons?
Abstain.
Councilmember Jay Simmons?
Yes.
Three yes, one no, and three abstentions, the motion fails.
Yeah. Okay.
So I guess I'm still confused, is it, can we discuss? Because we, before all of this came about, when it first hit the table, because we were not here, Touson, me, and Simmons, where it's not like excluded, the abstention is not excluded?
Abstention is essentially a no.
It's a vote.
It's a no.
Oh, okay.
But I guess you can decide, because he voted on Andrew's.
I know. And so again...
I guess you can decide which one you want to vote on, or if you don't want to vote.
Well, they're separate motions, yeah.
Why did they get split?
Because there's questions about mine.
The evaluations were done separately technically, so they were, I think that's why they should be separate.
You need four affirmative votes to pass a resolution, and in this case, there were not four affirmative votes.
Right, so even with the abstentions, you would still need four yeses for it to have...
And as the clerk indicated, an abstention is legally a negative vote.
Thank you.
Mr. Barr? Just to understand, so just as a Roberts rules, you know, because this stuff can be confusing. So if somebody wants to bring this back up, right, the yes votes can't, correct? The no vote could for an abstention?
Yes, that would be correct. There is a motion, a Roberts rules, a motion to reconsider a vote. And you can do that certainly at the same meeting, but you have to be a vote on the prevailing side. So if the motion carried, you have to be on the yes side. If the motion failed, you have to be on the no side or the negative side.
Or the abstention side.
So a person that voted yes cannot move to reconsider, but a person that voted no or abstained could.
I have one question, or just an observation, that my evaluation was conducted by people who are no longer at the table. who are no longer at the table, some of them. And so I'm kinda like, only got half the people, you know, that were at the table. I kinda think by drawing it out, you know, I was only able to get, that's just me. I'm okay with the decision, but it's just people evaluated me that are no longer here. And so they're not even here to vote.
To that end, they could have.
I'm just saying, because it's because we held it out so long. And so now, and no one is taking responsibility for it.
I'm sorry.
Maybe that wasn't a word.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really like that. Many of us have said, we did not do this on time. We literally said, we did not do this on time. We have taken responsibility.
Okay, not, okay, that's, I take that back, Madam Mayor. That's not the, that's not the word I'm looking for.
Thank you.
I guess consideration, into consideration.
Perception. Um, okay, so I, that's right, do you have some, you were gonna say something or no?
Okay.
All right, so we're gonna move to boards and commissions?
Cuz I feel like we're in limbo right now. So.
Okay. HRC?
Police advisory.
Police, police.
Oh, my.
Police advisory.
They meet on Thursday.
Yeah, I'll be there.
All right, HRC. There's no meeting. Arts Commission?
Um, I reached out to the chair, as I'm the new liaison, so we'll be, we're scheduling a meeting kind of ahead of their next commission meeting to kinda get you brought up to speed, and then I'll be attending their meetings, and then I'll, I'm gonna go to the next one, too.
Wonderful.
Uh, Parks and Rec has not met yet this year. They didn't have a January meeting, it fell on MLK Day, so they chose not to, so they'll have a meeting in February next.
All right, Sustainability? I mean, we had our meeting already, we haven't had another meeting since.
HGC?
Yes, HGC.
You just heard the latest one they're working on. Um, and I'm gonna say, that's Ellen Thackeray, right? Uh, she's really great.
She sounds great.
She reached out to me to kinda share the information and whatever. So I'm just saying, if you ever have questions about that, I know she's very willing to chat, but definitely appreciated.
Okay, Planning Commission?
Planning Commission met. There was a report from the Non-Motorized Advisory Commission. Bob Krasinski, who has been the chair of that committee for quite some time, is having health issues. And so there was a passing of the torch to Dylan Goings. They were both reapproved as, as members, but Dylan is now the chair. They passed a resolution to change their bylaws so that there would be a, at least a two-week overlap, because there wasn't anything in the bylaws for, you know, that transition. So that was there. Our new planner, Holly, and I've forgotten Holly's last name, brought forth a text amendment to remove supportive housing as a class in the, in the zoning. And so all of those properties that are now just considered in with the, the rest of the zoning. And so that's been stricken from, from the code. And that's it.
All right.
And that was overwhelmingly approved by the commission.
ZBA?
ZBA hasn't met since early December.
All right, SEMCOG?
SEMCOG, uh, there was a, they have a SEMCOG University, let me get my notes up here, that I attended on, on carbon reduction, and Bonnie Wesley was there as well. This is a new round of funding, and a different program that has to do with, January 18th, attended SEMCOG University, da, 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 for fiscal years 2024 to 2026. CRP is a federal aid for Surface Transportation Program to reduce carbon dioxide emissions from projects such as efforts to increase low flow of traffic, installation of dedicated turn lanes and roundabouts, fleet replacements, reducing single occupant vehicle travel to new or expanded routes. There's nine point, $9.5 million in that, and so there are grant possibilities here. Bonnie and I were chatting during the Zoom meeting. Something I learned was that road diets actually increase carbon emissions, and so they're not eligible for the program. But this could be used for electrification of a city fleet and for the infrastructure that we've talked about for a couple of years, in terms of our heavy trucks being run on propane international gas. So those kinds of things fit in. Projects with bicycles and things like that. This is different than the other program, but it, the conversation with Bonnie is that there, and I've discussed it with Mike Davis Jr., who's on the Planning Commission and also works for MDOT. And the thought is that those, those don't contribute enough, because the, the scoring of these is how much carbon are you taking out of the system? And a lot of the bike programs don't compete with, with some of the larger infrastructure projects, so. That's it.
Watts?
No meeting for January.
All right.
Urban County, I did attend Urban County this month. There were just some general introductions as the new county board chair, Justin Hodge, took over, and I'll be attending the Urban County orientation this Friday to really learn more about what the body does and what our role is in supporting the work. DDA. Christopher, we met last Thursday very early in the morning. We talked about.
Yep, we did all that. Friends are with their pool, thank you, Christopher.
I haven't been able to attend those, so I, I caught up with the chair, Jessica Fowle. She gave me a great summary of that. There are DNR grants available, Spark Grants available. The city is putting in for a playground at Prospect Park. And so the pool is going to go into the next round after that, which the date for submission has not been determined at this point. But the grant they're looking to, to get funded is for resurfacing of the pool. The grants in this program range from $100,000 to $1 million. And the project is estimated to be between $80,000 and $180,000, but with inflation in the 2024 fiscal year, this would come out, the expected cost is between $180,000 and $250,000. So it fits well within the lower range of that, that grant program. They also have a, a grant from the Metroparks for $40,000 for programming. And they had a number of funding sources last year, and Metroparks came forward this year and said, we will give you everything that you got from multiple sources last year. So there's $40,000 sitting there. The other entities that committed last year are still in limbo, but if they come forward, then, then that's even more. And so places like Trinity Health and the county could provide extra funding. And then there's a couple of small grants from the Ann Arbor Area Community Foundation, $2,000 for triathlon equipment, they've resurrected that and have been doing that. And the other $2,000 grant is for Ipsy Night Out, which this past year, the rental on the pool and all of staff time was donated. And so this will recoup some of those costs for this going forward into next year, so. And they're recognizing the need to increase the lessons for adults. Typically, you'd only have 10 lessons a year for adults, and this year, they found that there was 50, so they're planning to expand that and establish partnerships with other pools in the area so that this can go year round, so. That's it.
Bicentennial Committee?
Meeting this Thursday, I can't attend, I have a conflict, but I know, our new Commissioner, Somerville, will be.
Who's chairing that now?
Um, I'm not sure who's chairing it.
There's no chair for that?
Yeah, so I'm gonna guess they'll resolve it this next meeting. But, yeah, so on first line will be the next one.
Well, thank you all. Council Propose Business, I started that way last time, so. Councilmember King? Oh, can somebody move to extend just for a few?
I saw move.
How long, please?
About 10, 15 minutes.
Can you, all right.
I saw move to extend the council meeting by, I'll say, 15 minutes.
All right. All in favor of extending till 10:15?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right, Councilmember King?
Oh, good evening, everybody. I do not have any business today, thank you.
Thank you, you sound so great. Councilmember D Simmons?
All right, well, you know, I can't not have business, but I will save some of it. I'll probably follow up. I, I had some things, actually, after looking at the CIL and also the, what Mr. Barr sent us, I'll send y'all some just questions or things from that separately. This has been a heavy season for constituent outreach. So just wanna bring a couple of things forward from that, some of those. And also, it's great, because a lot of them align with the different goals that we've talked about. So one is, a resident emailed about speeding on Prospect and Forest, and was talking about different traffic calming for safety, but also noted nervousness even with just walking on sidewalk because of a previous rollover that was, that happened due to speeding, which, you know, I can understand. And anyway, just like lifts up that need to focus on this in a more wide way. And, and so, anyway, so that'll come back around again, just thinking about traffic stuff overall. Also, I had a, a meeting with the resident who taught, shared about when they called for a medical emergency for someone who's parked in a vehicle and got a major police response. So, so questions about, like, protocol, wound up being a couple of YPD responders plus EMU, plus the Sheriff's Department. But then it took a while before medical personnel actually made it to the site. So trying to get a sense of, like, what the hap, why that happened. And also that, as they witnessed it, you know, they, they weren't asked any questions, even though they had made the call before, but then felt that the situation was actually escalated by the officers. One thing, saying that when they got to the, when they were approached, they approached the car, that they didn't actually make clear that they were the cops. And so the person who had been basically passed out for at least 40 minutes, probably, was woken up to a start and, like, was very confused, and other things ensued. So anyhow, and also named that they asked for identifiers from the officers, but then didn't get it. And so that's something to consider in terms of both, you know, what is that protocol with our police department, but then also just, you know, further evidence of needing different numbers to call for different things, when you want different kinds of response. Also wanted to lift up, so a resident reached out about wanting to help support the city to do, to apply for some environmental justice grants from the infrastructure bill, and just in general, to think about ways that, you know, what kinds of projects are things that we could do to be prepared for the money coming from the infrastructure bill, as well as the Inflation Reduction Act, and, and things of that sort. But that, we have a lot of residents. I mean, one of the, the things about living in a college town is you've got a lot of people who are like master grant writers. So, anyway, came forward to offer some support, and so I'll be in touch with some folks maybe about that. And, hold on, let me just, that's. Yeah, and then I'll just, I've been following up around some of the other things that people have been contacting me about. I feel like there is something else, but that's good for now. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Wilcoxen?
Um, just one thing, is just an update on the grant proposal for DAM. That is due on January 31st. The, you know, HRWC is diligently working on that grant proposal, the information going into that, just coming from the, the engineering groups that are working on that. We've gotten some letters of support from Jeff Irwin's office, Debbie Dingle's office, Jimmy Wilson, you know, and going out to some, you know, Annie Somerville and Ken Schwartz, I need to follow up with. But today, we got a, an email from Brenda Stumbo saying that they would not be, that the, the board of the township has a number of questions that they don't feel comfortable giving that letter at this time. And so that means that the, the letter from Representative Wilson is all that much more important about that. But, you know, there was a presentation by the engineering firm at the Township Building, and none of the board showed up. Brenda Stumbo was there, and a couple of staff people, but largely nobody else from the board showed up to that meeting. So that, the fact that they still have questions, you know, that, that settlement and informational letter went out to council, and it went out to all those surrounding communities as well. And after that presentation, Brenda Stumbo seemed fine, she, she understood what was going on. But apparently, the other commissioners that were not there still have questions. So it would have been nice to get their support, but we have to move forward without that, so. We shall do that. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet?
Um, I don't have a lot, I just wanted to give a quick say that it was nice to kinda meet some of the, the men behind the scenes at DPS, that kinda make things happen around town. So I got to take a nice little tour with Bonnie, and then got to interact with them before they left for shift and kinda meet some of those gentlemen, so hardworking guys over there. So that was nice. But if you haven't had a chance to, stop by and check out that part of the operation, it's worth a visit, so.
There's at least one hardworking woman over there, not including Bonnie.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Did you not meet her?
I met all the office, yeah, yeah, yep, yep, staff, too.
The hardworking people.
I didn't even see Bonnie. Yeah. Oh, you would assume there's no one, right. Councilmember J Simmons?
Um, a couple of things, well, actually, not much, but I'll just answer, well, maybe provide a little insight for Councilmember Simmons, this question about the response and why police might show up when there's a medical call, at least when I was a police officer, and I'm gonna guess it's similar.
Well, not so much just, it was the number of cars, five, five cars, yeah.
So I'm not gonna talk to that part, but as, when I was a police officer, I imagine, I mean, still today, we were trained as first responders, and we carried AEDs and, you know, first aid kits, because sometimes we were the first to come and to give aid, you know, but I, I'm not sure about the rest of that whole thing. But actually, police, fire, and EMS would come, because sometimes EMS would be the last one to get there, so. But, yeah, I'm not sure about all that other stuff. And then, actually, Steve and I were talking, and we were wondering, is it time to reconsider this mask rule? Your council chair? He said he was gonna bring it up, but I'm just bringing it up. Do we wanna make that, you know, something to consider, cuz it's our rule for us up here? You know, whether we want that to be optional or whatever, so I don't know if we wanna put that on the next agenda. It's thrown out there since we talked about it.
The resolution actually states that all the members of the public, everyone
I know.
At the meeting, and all boards of the commission should be wearing masks.
Yeah, so, so anyway, I don't know, maybe time to consider.
And it's listed as, like, until further notice, or until, whatever it was, until changes?
It was, it was, yeah.
Forever.
That's what I thought, okay. Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
Well, we can, we can send it in, we can add it to the agenda, or.
Can we add it to the agenda? Steve, are you down for that?
Yeah, sure.
It'll be my second, my plus one on the agenda.
Sure.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
I will say, you know, we have been getting information that cases are up, but we can discuss it at the.
No, that's okay, I think it's just we're looking at what do we want to do, so we just talked about that.
All right, all done?
I'm all done, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tousen?
I'm gonna keep it short and sweet. Today, I did go on a tour of DPS. And I would like to say, I've seen a lot of things. And I just think that it's, it's amazing what we can do in Ipsy with so very little. But I can only imagine what we can do with so much more. So let's just keep moving forward, keep going and keep growing, that's all I have.
Oh, thank you. Okay, communications from me. I take my tour on Thursday, so I can't wait to see what everybody's talking about. This is a hot ticket item here, so I can't wait. I also would like to like take some tours of other spaces. So like, I've been in the police department before, but I haven't been in there in a long time. The fire department, it's been a long time, definitely pre-COVID, of course. So just wanting to see what our facilities look like and, you know, how they are holding up over time when we haven't been able to invest much in them. There's even, again, tonight, took a tour of parts of the building I've never been in in nine years almost, guys, so, you know. A lot, a lot to think about moving forward as we talk about like facilities and infrastructure and everything that we need to be doing and accommodations for, not only like when our residents come in, but for our staff. Also, I think that tonight was an eye-opening learning experience for me, individually, I can say. I think, you know, it just solidifies why good processes and like open communication is so important, and making sure that we have, you know, shared understanding of things. I mean, it goes back to, we started with our goal-setting session where we were so well-aligned on so much. And to me, that is a good foundation for moving us forward, to make sure that we don't end up in spaces of confusion and contention around topics that we could easily, you know, discuss and have on the table. So I appreciate everybody's, you know, commitment to having the conversation, be it difficult, I'm, I'm cool with difficult conversations, because I think there's growth in it always, so we can do better going forward, all of us, everyone in here. So also, just a few other things, so I attended the MLK celebration last Monday at EMU, that was really, really great. Also attended a basketball game on Saturday, a doubleheader, and they, you know, acknowledged council as local heroes, which was really like humbling to have that distinction and be brought out and, you know, and meet folks and do a bunch of things. And so, again, that's a part of, you know, the goal to really strengthen the, the connection between the city and the university, while also, you know, supporting our students and some of our local folks who go to Eastern and play on those teams. And just making sure that we are, you know, pouring out, leaning in as we want them to lean in and pour into us. So hopefully, we can keep that connection going by, you know, involving them in other things, doing other things collaboratively, and making sure that we invite them into, you know, our activities, including like bicentennial and all of that. So yeah, looking forward to continuing the work. That's all for me, Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I want to apologize if I was very defensive tonight, because I wasn't, that was not my intent. My intent was to offer clarification. And so I want City Council, I think we're all a team, that's how I like to look at it. And I hope we're not gonna be, you know, playing gotcha moments, because if it's something you need, you know, just say something. And, but I, I'd appreciate that, so. So I appreciate all the feedback, but, and what has come out of the feedback, so I appreciate that. The other thing, I sent everyone an email about the police advertisement. Is anyone opposed to extending?
And I, I just didn't respond to the email, because I'm always so confused about what's considered deliberation or not. You know, open meetings, so I'm not opposed.
Okay, okay. Is that the general consensus, no one is opposed? Okay. And it's, it's because we kind of got some foreend kind of quickly, and then it just kind of slowed down. So we're gonna just extend it to see what we, what we get, what comes in. So that's all I have, I am just busy. I'm busy, I hope to bring, at the next meeting, a closed session to present the POAM contract. They've been just looking over the language over and over and over and over and over. So I think we're at the point where, you know, we're ready to go ahead and present it in a closed session, and then they will set a meeting to vote on it. So that's it.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, now is our second opportunity for public comment. We don't have anyone in the audience, but do we have anyone online?
If anyone attending virtually would like to make comment, please raise your hand now. All right, Annie doesn't want to make comment.
Hi, Annie. Okay, I don't have any additional remarks. We're done before 10:15, which is a blessing. The meeting is adjourned.